It's 5:30, time to call the meeting to order. Would you please stand as we recite the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looks like we have a full house here tonight. Thank you for attending the meeting. I hope this goes well and we're not here all night. We can accomplish a lot of things in a short period of time. So, first item of business, adoption of the agenda. Gentlemen, have you looked at the agenda? You have any concerns?
No.
Okay. I entertain a motion that we adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Not to get ahead of myself this time. Next on the list, appointments, and these are with the Housing Authority. And Jeff, I think if I remembered right, the last time I did this, I did all the names, all at one time. Okay. Okay. So, we have one, unexpired term on the Housing Authority Board, and we have three that are going to be reappointed. So, on this, I move to appoint Rita Ortalani to an unexpired term on the Housing Authority Board. This term will expire on April 11th, 2022. I move to reappoint Kim Goodman to a second term on the Housing Authority Board. This term will expire on April 11th, 2023. I move to reappoint Tim White to a second term on the Housing Authority Board. This term will expire on April 11th, 2023. And I move to reappoint Gary Morrison to a second term on the Housing Authority Board. This term will expire on April 11th, 2023. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. I would like to thank, welcome Rita aboard on the Housing Authority, and thank Kim Goodman, Tim White, and Gary Morrison for making themselves eligible to be reappointed and serve another term. All right. Common consent agenda. Any questions or concerns on that, gentlemen?
I move we adopt the consent agenda.
Second?
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Next on the list, this is going pretty good so far. Still early, still early. Not counting anything out right now. Okay. Don Cushing, you're up.
Yes, 301 North 11th. This is one that we had brought before for consideration for condemnation. There has been a new roof installed on there and work done. It's staff's recommendation, due to that work, that we adjourn for 60 days and allow them to continue to work on improvements before we bring it back for your consideration for condemnation.
Okay. I'll open the public hearing for this. Is the owner happen to be here tonight? All right. Anyone in the neighborhood that would have some concerns or comment on this? All right. Then I'll close the public hearing. Gentlemen, any questions for Don?
I don't have any questions.
Great news. They're working on it.
Okay. So, I entertain a motion. I move to adjourn the public hearing for 60 days, which will be June 27th, 2019. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item, public hearing to consider condemnation of a structure located at 517 West Chestnut Street as dangerous and unsafe. Don?
Yeah, there was fire damage to the structure inside. It's been boarded up, but there's quite a bit of damage inside and outside. We've had some issues with it prior to the fire. It is staff's recommendation that due to the condition of the fire and condition of the structure, that we recommend condemnation of 517 West Chestnut Street as dangerous and unsafe.
Thank you. I'll open up the public hearing. The owner of the property in attendance tonight, yes, would you like to make some, have a statement or make some comments?
Identify himself.
Please identify your name at the podium.
My name is Edward Richardson.
All right.
I inherited this house. I attempted to rent it. It has not been a successful venture, not having any luck. I'm open to exploring any options. I don't know exactly what to do with it. I asked for several bids on demolition, and they are more than I can afford, some $7,500 to $6,500. There's just no money to be made there. If I could donate it to the fire department to burn it down?
To finish the job.
I commend the fire department. It's obviously very, has very excellent service. They managed to get it before it burned to cinders, which would have been preferable, but...
Sorry.
The fire chief loves to hear that.
I'm willing to work with whatever we can do.
So you're willing to move forward with the removal?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I have no interest.
Makes it easier for us, right?
It makes it easier for us. We can go forward and work towards removal, and that's no problem for us to do that.
Consent document, I can get to Don if you want me to.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll get your information. We have a form that can expedite that.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone in the neighborhood that lives adjacent to this that would like to step forward and have some comments? All right. Then I'll close the public hearing on this. And commissioners?
Edward, do you understand what happens if the city goes ahead and condemns it and tears it down? Do you understand fully what happens if we condemn it and tear it down?
No, I do not.
If I believe you're still liable for the cost of demolition?
Okay.
And normally, isn't he billed after demolition? Is, in the past, the owner had been billed, and then when they failed to bill, pay, it went on to the property tax.
Right.
Isn't that correct?
If it's not paid voluntarily, it's assessed on taxes.
Right. If it's not paid, then it goes on to the tax roll.
Right. And then it would go into tax sale.
Yes.
Okay. I'm fully aware.
Okay. Just as long as you understood that and you know, make sure...
As I said, it's not been a...
It wasn't a great inheritance, it sounds like.
No, it was not.
Sorry to hear that.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure while we're at the public hearing, that all the conditions are, that he understands fully what the process is, and that he still will receive a bill for the demolition and...
All right.
So with that, Jeff, you had mentioned that you could go ahead and expedite, instead of going through the process, get him an affidavit that he could sign, that we could expedite removal?
Yeah, I would go ahead and adopt the resolution condemning, in case he changes his mind and doesn't sign it.
Right.
But if we get the document signed, then it just ends right there.
Okay. So as part of our motion, we should authorize you to prepare a document to expedite removal of the property?
Sure.
Okay.
Sounds good. All right. So, if there's nothing else, would someone like to make the motion?
I move to condemn the structure at 517 West Chestnut as dangerous and unsafe, and authorize a city attorney to prepare documentation to expedite removal of the property.
Second?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Next, we have a presentation from Ford County Mental Health Center. And would you be Steve Denny?
I am Steve Denny.
All right. You look familiar to me.
Very good. Yeah, I'm Steve Denny. I'm the Director of Clinical Services at Ford County Mental Health Center, and I'm here to talk about liquor tax funding. I think I've seen you the last several years, and I just thank you for the opportunity to talk a little bit about what we do and where your dollars go, and why we'd like to continue to request funding for our programming. So, as you're aware, the liquor tax statute allows for that funding to be divided up into three areas. One of them is parks and recreation, the other is general funding, and a third of that is supposed to go towards treatment of alcohol-related disorders and drug-related disorders. And we've had a longstanding relationship with the City of Independence to provide care and treatment for individuals with that need. I'd like to just make sure you understand what we do tonight, and talk about what we've done in the last year, and make sure you understand some of the concerns that we continue to encounter in the community. A lot of people think of alcohol and drug treatment as just achieving sobriety, but we really focus on recovery, which you'll see is a, it's a change of life where people improve their health, their wellness, and they strive to reach their full potential. We really have adopted that approach beyond just helping people be clean, because if you just focus on the sobriety and don't fill the other gaps, you don't get too far. Yeah, that's really bad grammar, you don't get too far, excuse me, but you get what I'm saying. And so we really focus on multiple areas, the health and wellness, employment, keeping people out of the legal system, reducing recidivism, family and relationships, and engaging people in the community. That's just a focus of our treatment. And I think, when I go to commission meetings, I think it's people, it's so important for the communities to understand the element of the community, and what a role it plays in helping people recover. And we have this idea called recovery-oriented systems of care. And the idea, it's not just about a treatment facility, it's about what can we do as the community to help people into recovery? And there's a couple concepts. One is we like to bring in people who've been in recovery themselves. That's part of what your liquor tax dollars go to, is to help fund programming for peer support services, is what we call that. We have an idea called no wrong door, which means that someone seeking help may not want to come and see us. They might want to start with a church, or a friend, or a family member, but we like to connect people to those resources. And we also very much emphasize rejoining and rebuilding life in the community. So those are things that we really focus on and believe in, and there's different areas we try to hone in on. Obviously, having, finding a home and housing. Housing for individuals with addiction is a challenge, because many have legal backgrounds and legal histories, and the housing that is available often has other individuals who are using drugs. You're trying to move them out of that lifestyle and that culture, and so that's something we really have to work hard at, to find adequate housing. Health, I'm going to talk about methamphetamine here a little bit, and obviously, that has significant health implications, as do other substances. So connecting people to healthcare and other supportive services. Purpose, finding a job, finding a goal, finding community service, finding transportation, whatever we can do to help that person find purpose, and obviously, as I said earlier, connecting people to the community, whether that's a church, a support group, some activity in a center where someone, in the community where someone can be productive and helpful. So, I just wanted to kind of set that stage. I think you've asked a lot of good questions in the last couple of years, and I just want to make sure you understand our philosophy and what we're doing in our treatment. I do always try to bring some stats as far as reasons for admission. This chart shows the number, the different substances and the reasons why they're admitted to our facility. Forty-seven percent of our admissions, their primary diagnosis is a methamphetamine-related condition. As I've said before, that is incredibly high, and higher than other regions of the state and the country. And that's not unique to Independence, but it's definitely, it's definitely common in southeast Kansas, and that's just part of our culture we're struggling with, and lots of reasons for that. Alcohol is number two, marijuana is number three. We are seeing a rise in treatment of opioid conditions as we start to have programs and initiatives to address that, and I expect we'll continue to see that rise. And you hear a lot about opioid crisis on the news, but methamphetamine is still probably my biggest concern, as we think about what's going on in our communities. Not that the opioid issues aren't real and something we should be taking seriously. This is just a chart going over our admission events over the last three years. I think 2016, we had 200 and, I can't really read it, 283, 283, 275 last year, and we're up to 295, I'm sorry, 275 in 2017, and we're up to 295 in 2018. So a slight rise in events, which in some ways is a good thing, which means that people are coming in and accessing services. We want that. I always like to make sure you understand what we do with those dollars. We provide assessment and referral. We provide core treatment services, which is individual, group, family interventions. Here in Independence, it's the only office where we have intensive outpatient services, which is a more intensive level of care. We provide at least nine hours of treatment per week for people who enter that program. We do have peer support services, which I described earlier. We do have a lot of assessments and recommendations for individuals who've had a DUI event of some sort, where we make recommendations for treatment and response to that. We do provide public education, prevention, and we do use these dollars to help respond to crisis events, which there is not a lot of funding to help respond to substance-related crisis events, so we appreciate the dollars to help fill in those gaps. In terms of specifically, you know, where, how do we use this money? We have state dollars to help cover the uninsured, and the vast majority of the people who come through our doors for addiction treatment are uninsured, although we do have some Medicaid and commercial. That money usually runs out, it runs on the fiscal year, and it usually runs out in May. We're going to run out in April this year. Probably by now, by the time we close out our April financials, we will have expended our state allotment. So we use liquor tax dollars throughout our communities to help fill in those gaps. And as I said earlier, we use it to pay for services that aren't necessarily reimbursable through traditional levels of care. So we do coordination, making sure people get to their appointments, get to inpatient treatment, that they go back and forth to where they need to, follow-up when people are leaving, to make sure they have follow-up appointments. We do crisis services and some community education and support. Just four things I wanted to point your attention to, you know, what we've been doing in the last year. We've had 46 successful discharges, just here in the Independence community, which those are 50%, 57% of those people have had gainful employment at the time of leaving services. And that number can be deceptive, because we have a lot of people that leave successfully, but they don't have a final discharge event, so that number and the impact is significant. But those are our exact discharge numbers. We do have a new partnership with JJA going on, or DCF, Juvenile Services, and we are working with adolescents and families who are in recovery and struggling with addiction. And one of the other things that we have done is really started to reach out and have partnerships with law enforcement, first responders, hospitals, to start talking about this issue as a community. And we've had a couple of, two key events where we've had forums and tried to start problem-solving, identifying ways to move ahead as a community. We've realized that Ford County Mental Health is not going to resolve this in and of itself. And we want to be a key partner, but some of these issues are much larger than just one organization, and for sure, one individual. So that's what we do. We hope to continue our partnership with you as we move ahead, always open for questions, and I appreciate your time.
All right, Steve, thank you.
When you say 295 admissions last year and 46 successful discharges, that doesn't sound very optimistic.
Yeah, like I said earlier, a successful discharge event is defined as someone who comes in for their final appointment, and we're able to have a discharge event that, you know, we document step by step.
Right.
And a lot of people, just like in medical care, come in, they get what they need, and they move on. So like, we just don't have discharge data on those individuals.
So it may be much more positive than it appears from those numbers.
Yeah. And a lot of those people we see, and we refer on to other resources and services as well. I mean, they might go to an inpatient facility and go to an integration program, so those evaluation events are not necessarily everyone that goes through our full treatment program. And really trying to communicate volume of numbers right now as much as anything with that data. Good question, though. Thank you.
So, the way the program's set up, you don't have any statistics on successful, like percentage of successful admission to recovery?
Yeah, we do track that data, and we track a lot of different things, from time, length of sobriety, we track employment outcomes, we track reentry into the legal system, and all of those things.
So do you know what your success rate is?
I don't have that available today, specifically for Independence, because it's difficult for me to, we have kind of a regional approach, so it's difficult for me to separate that out by city.
Well, just program-wise, you know, off your, off the top of your head for your whole program, county-wise? If you don't, that's fine.
It would depend, I would have to break it down by diagnosis, as I said, and by substance, it gets more complicated. Some of the less severe substances, you're probably going to see a higher success rate. Methamphetamine is a very addictive substance, and there are a lot of other factors that go into that. So I don't want to throw out a number, and then...
That's fine.
But I can certainly get you that information. That'd be helpful.
That'd be fine. What are you seeing as far as a starting age? Are you seeing a trend for younger individuals to get involved with alcohol, or narcotics, or drugs?
Yeah, most of the people that we treat that enter into our services are between the ages of 24 and 60, you know, and even a subgroup, 24 to 50, I would say. But, I mean, the national data tells us that age of first use is getting younger and younger every year. Age, for meth, the average age of first use, I believe, is 12, last time I checked.
Oh, really?
That's not always true, and that's an average across a continuum, but our youth are exposed to substances on a regular basis, and there are a lot of other substances that aren't necessarily illegal that our youth struggle with. And we have the whole vaping thing, which we're still trying to figure out and learn about that. We also have a lot of over-the-counter and stimulant substances like bath salts and other things that we may not have a drug test for yet, that a lot of our youth are struggling with.
Do you work with the school system as far as putting on programs, as far as the dangers of drugs and...
Yeah, yeah, so that's, you're talking about prevention activities.
Yes, uh-huh.
Yeah, we have, last year we had a grant that those dollars have, went away, but we had a grant working specifically with the school systems here in Montgomery County. We focused on alcohol use and the risks of alcohol use for that grant. So yes, we've done that. We do that by request. There's a lot of different directions we can go with that.
And are you seeing a lot of repeat clientele? In other words, they go through, so far through the process, and then they eventually find their way back to Ford County again, or...
Yeah, that's part of recovery, is sometimes it takes multiple episodes for it to sink in. We've told stories of individuals who've been, you know, entered treatment 28-plus times, and the 29th time, the individual becomes sober, and has been sober for 30 years, and has a job, and is out there in the community doing good things. But there's no magic period, you know, where someone just becomes, becomes a recovery. It's a choice, and it's, sometimes it takes a while for the right things to be in place for that individual to move ahead. But we do set limits. There is a point where we also say that it's time for us to try something different, because it's also not fair to other people who are wanting treatment to lose access to services when someone else is not engaged, so absolutely.
Do you ever reach a point where you've tried all these methods, and that person is unwilling to accept, you know, where they're at? You get to that point where you've realized you've done everything that you can, and...
Yes, that happens.
And you just basically...
I don't have numbers, but there is a time where we call it, we call it unsuccessful discharge. Not that we wouldn't take them back, but what we're saying is, what we have to offer is not working. So we might either try a different provider, we might try a different level of care, or we might say, you know, come back, come back in a year, let's see where things are at then. Sometimes they end up back in our services because the judge sends them back to see us as well.
Okay.
Good questions.
All right. So the funding used for prevention, or mainly just recovery?
I would say 95% plus goes towards treatment, and we need it to deliver services.
Yeah, like you said, the hard part is that it's based on choice, and it's difficult.
We are learning, and we're getting better at it. We're learning more and more about the brain and how it relates to addiction. We also do co-occurring work, which means we're also treating mental health conditions side by side. If someone also has depression or anxiety, we try to treat the whole person.
And your portion of our funding, is it a third by statute? Is that what we designate to them, a third of the funding?
That's my understanding.
Do you operate on a calendar year, or is that fiscal?
Fiscal year. We go on a fiscal year.
So when you said you're about out of money in April, it's not like you started in January, in or out, but...
No, yeah.
You've still got a lot of month or two.
We know what we're going to get from the, from the state at the, at the big, end of every fiscal year, usually about May or June, we'll find out. And we try to, you know, allot that as best as we possibly can, without denying treatment. It's always a kind of a balance. We have to, still want to get people in and not say, no, you can't come in for services, but also we have to be good stewards of those dollars, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, but you're dealing with a desperate situation, too, that makes it tough to balance money and treatment.
Yeah. Behavioral healthcare is always driven by a crisis. It's either a relational crisis, a personal crisis, a legal crisis, so we don't have a way of predicting those waves. I do think we are seeing increased challenges in our community. I just see it in multi-areas, in terms of some of the struggles our, some of our citizens have, certainly our children. I do believe that addiction is a factor in what we're dealing with.
And if I remember right, in the fund, there were, was it $42,000? Is that right? So they would be receiving a third of that amount?
Traditionally appropriated 30,000, so it'd be higher than a third, but I think the last few years, since I've been here anyway, it's always been 30,000.
30,000?
That was for sure last year's amount. I was thinking it was in the 20s the two years before that, but in that, in that range. It's always been in kind of a range, I think, depending on revenue.
Okay. Gentlemen, any, anything else? Steve, thank you very much for your presentation. Good luck and...
If you have additional questions, don't hesitate to contact me.
All right, Steve. Thank you very much. All right. Next, item six, we have citizens' requests from Robert Miller to discuss modifying city code to prohibit throwing grass in the street. Robert, good to see you. How are you today, sir?
Your houses are looking amazing.
Thank you.
Congratulations on that award.
My name is Bob Miller, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to address the commission. Worm weather and lawn mowing is here now, and in the past, I've noticed a number of properties around town in the process of mowing their grass, it was blown out in the street and left. In addition to looking bad and like a hayfield, it also is a safety issue to those who use the street to walk, bicycle, or motorcycle. In addition, when it rains, the grass can be washed down into the sewer system. In an email to me by Assistant City Manager Kelly Passier dated February 25th, which is in your packet, she listed a couple of sections of the code, specifically section 94-33 and 94-35, that prohibits glass, nails, bottles, wire, and dangerous objects in the street, or to place anything that would interfere with the free flow of water in the streets. Those sections of the code are in the neighborhood of what I'm trying to achieve, but don't specifically prohibit grass out in the street and leaving it. Since there has been a committee formed on blight and beautification, and since the city has put an emphasis on blight and beautification, I'd like the commission to either add language to those sections, or create a new ordinance prohibiting blowing grass in the street and the sidewalks and leaving it when mowing. I'd like to see enforcement, and I'd like for there to... and I'd like for there to be consequences for habitual violators, especially since the city has created a new full-time position for code enforcement, and has hired a person as a code enforcement officer, I realize there are times, because of some yards, that blowing grass out in the street may happen, however, it doesn't take much time or effort to take the mower out in the street, or a blower, and blow the grass back into the yard, so the street is kept clear and neat, there's really no excuse to blow the grass out in the street and leave it, the simplest and easy way to solve this problem is to turn the mower in the other direction, where the discharge lands in the yard and not in the street, I noticed in the packet, there were several concerns that city staff listed, and I'd like to address those, I have six of those to address as well, number one was worrying about the expectation of enforcement and not enough staff to enforce an ordinance like this, yes, the city should enforce their own ordinances, the city's commitment to beautifying the town should include anything that would meet that goal, including the simple request of addressing the grass discharge problem, the city has recently created a new position and hired a full-time code enforcement officer, number two, worrying about increasing cases in municipal court causing a bottleneck, I'd suggest publicizing this issue on the city's website and Facebook page, along with articles in both newspapers and the city newsletter throughout the mowing season, in addition, there could be a couple of warning letters sent to property owners before any action is taken, this gives ample warning to violators to make necessary changes and avoid going to court, with good code enforcement and retraining of the violators, this problem should be minimal, worrying about who to cite, the obvious answer is ultimately the property owner is responsible, the same party the city expects to pay the taxes on the property, number four, worrying about witnessing the grass being mowed and discharged into the street, if you look at the pictures that I included in your packet, and hopefully they'll flash them up on top here, I provided, I think anyone with common sense, when you look at those pictures, can see this is a violation, in some cases, the streets look like a hayfield, regardless of who did the mowing, or whether it was witnessed or not, number five, worrying about telling people to mow their yard and then getting cited for mowing, for mowing grass into the street, this is simply resolved by reminding them when mowing to not discharge their grass clippings into the street, number six, worrying about how it may be hard for some locations to comply, like the area between the cemetery wall and Penn Avenue, where there's a will, there's a way, how about blowing the grass in instead of out, how about using a mulch mower, changing behavior regarding this topic may not be quick and without effort, but it needs to start somewhere, and if the city is truly serious and committed about blight and beautification, and if the city truly cares about keeping the streets clear of debris for the safety of the residents, now is the time and place begin.
All right, thank you, Bob. I, oh, the pictures are on the screen now, yeah, I have seen some, and I, I think I've called it to the attention to, to staff on some of these where there was excessive amounts of grass thrown out into the street, you know, normally, you would think if you were cutting grass and, I don't know, it's, it's just a difference of opinion, I guess, if I was cutting grass and I had, I don't throw grass out into the street, but if for some reason I would, and it looked like that, my responsibility, I'd, I'd clean it up, you know, I'd, I'd get a broom and a garbage bag and pile it up and put it in a bag and, and not leave it, that's, that's just not completing the job, but, but I see not, not everybody, not everybody's doing that, you know, I like the idea as far as publicizing it, reminding people that, that in our attempts to do, to do the beautification, this is also part of it, you know, to leave your, keep your grass cut, you know, make sure you're not throwing debris out into the street, so I can see your points on this, because I have seen this on, can't say a lot of occasions, but enough to notice that it can and potentially be a problem, gentlemen?
I, I appreciate Mr. Miller's efforts very much, he's a, a model for the whole city as far as keeping his property looking amazing and beautiful, I, you know, we had a group of volunteers get together every Saturday morning and pick up trash for, we did it for, I think, thirty straight weeks, and we kept thinking maybe we'd gain on it, you know, we just picked up the trash along the curb, but every week, just more and more and more trash, so people are not real concerned, I mean, a lot of people are not real concerned about keeping their property clean, as far as whether we could enforce it, I just don't have a good feel for that, I can see that that'd be quite a, could be quite a task, I don't know how common this is, I do agree that those photos, they look terrible, and it is pretty easy to prevent, just mow it the other direction, so it shoots it back onto the lawn, I don't know, I guess I'd be interested whether other cities have attempted this and what their results were.
I think the notification to start with would be a good point, to start putting it in the newsletter, and a citizen brought another concern, and it was published in the newsletter, and they called after it was released and said, hey, I took care of my problem, and it was just a general recommendation for everyone, but it did reach the culprit, and I think this needs to, to start with notification of newsletter, the social media, you know, we're doing flyers, I think once the word gets out, a lot of people, I was a guilty party until I mowed the yard and my car was parked next to the curb, and I realized I was going to blow the clippings onto my car, now, I didn't change directions to keep it out of the street, I changed to keep it off my car, but, you know, it was just, you just get in a routine and, you know, I always made a path of certain direction, and I looped back, and it was, that was just habit, it's like putting my shoes on first thing when I get up, mowing the yard, and I didn't think what was happening till I saw the consequences to my car, and then I thought, you know, I can, and I make two passes, blow it in, then I switch, so that it doesn't blow out into the street, so I think we need to do some education, and I think a lot of people first don't understand, this was extreme here, that, you know, it's obvious that that wasn't just a normal short clipping, but you see the impact, and somebody posted on Facebook, a town close to here, and they were making the recommendation, and the clippings covered the street, the curb or the right of way was mowed in the street, to center line to center line on both sides, and that's what the recommendation was going out, that it's a, a risk to motorcycles and a reminder to, I think it's a good point, we need to start, and if it doesn't get addressed, then possibly consider the other steps of, of enforcement, but we need to, we need to make people aware of what the hazards are, that they are real to bicycles and motorcycles, and, you know, when you ride a motorcycle, you know, you start watching for, for grain, for grass clippings, it only takes you one time to forget, and then you remember as you pick your bike up, and, but there's so many hazards, loose gravel, the chat from the winter, snowfall or ice, the grass clippings, even grain spilling during harvest time, and it, it can get you in a situation really quick.
May I make a few other comments, I like the idea of, of your pub, publicizing things, but there's some people that just won't change unless they know there's an ordinance against it or a law, you already have things in here like glass and nails and bottles and wire not being put in the street, if you could just add grass discharge or clippings for mowing, and if people know, first of all, I think the education's good, they need to be educated, give chances to, to not do this, change their behavior, but if they don't, then there needs to be the stick, if the carrot won't work, that's just why I'm asking, just add that, please add that language to it, so there's some, could be some enforcement, and they know there would be some enforcement to it.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob, I appreciate it.
With the section ninety-four thirty-three that, that Bob mentioned, adding it in there, there's no mention of a fine in that section that I see, so is it?
The way, the way that's handled in the city code, if something is made unlawful, but that, like that particular section doesn't have a fine, there's a catch-all section that says, for any violation of the code, and I think it's a fine of up to five hundred dollars or something, but I was going to say on, on grass clippings, that's going to be similar to like littering, it's not going to be like an environmental code where you just send them a notice, clean up your yard, you're criminalizing something, they're going to get a record for grass clippings, you need to understand that.
So, really, littering would be more appropriate than these two, or?
I would compare, if you're going to give out tickets for grass clippings, it would be more like the same as littering, and, and the problem there is grass clippings, a lot of times dissipate when traffic goes over them, so you about have to see it happen to give the citation, because, you know, in my neighborhood, it's not uncommon, down at the ballparks, not to pick on city rec, to see them shoot the grass out, but half hour later, cars have gone over and it's not there, so, now, if the grass is thick and heavy and wet, or rain catches it, it's going to stay there longer, that's true.
So, what is that, what is the fine for littering?
I couldn't tell you, I've taught my head, I, it's not much, but, but it, it's, it's, it goes on your record, so.
Well, I think until we look at the littering or the other possibilities, that it definitely should be put in a newsletter and publicized to draw attention.
And we have some commercial entities that, like TLC Plush and some of those, that do a pretty good bulk of the mowing for citizens within the city limits of independence, and also, commercial areas also, maybe that would be a good place to start, to, just to make them aware of, of, that, that they are not blowing the grass clippings, I'm not saying that they are, but make them aware that they?
Blow them back in.
Blow them back in, or, or pick them up, do not leave them out in the street, so maybe we're looking at doing an educational program right now, and then see what this looks like, and if it still presents a problem, then come back and address it as a littering issue and approach it from that angle.
Yeah, I think that's a good approach to start with education, I mean, the photos shown up there, I think are by far an exception to what you normally see, and that, that can, specific instance, we know where that happened, and that's been corrected, and there were some unusual circumstances there, but yeah, I mean, if somebody sees that kind of thing out in the street, I mean, that's how we would have to enforce it, we, we wouldn't be driving around looking for grass in the street, somebody may have to call and say, there's a lot of grass here, and there's an issue, and if we get the education out there, people know that, then, I mean, we, we did, when we added the code enforcement position, you know, it's not like we weren't doing this before, and we, but we did put more focus on it, because we were behind, we were so far behind, we couldn't keep up, and we still can't, I mean, even focusing it now on that, it's difficult, so this would just add, add to that, but I think education is the best way to go.
I've noticed the code enforcement down in our neighborhood quite a bit, weekly, in fact, coming down there, so it could be a possibility of him seeing somebody doing it, and just as he's driving by, stop and just make a suggestion.
Yeah, because I, I think what we have actually is adequate, saying you can't put stuff in there to, that may clog up the storm drain, I think that's adequate to enforce now, if there's piles of grass, like a row of hay, certainly, but education, and our, our code enforcement, we're trying to take that, an approach now, not just responding, you know, by complaint, our code enforcement officer started, and we're working on a grid system, and he's working his way out both directions, this direction, so if he does notice that, certainly, something like that is aberrant, but.
Yeah, the ninety-four thirty-five looks like it's intended not to divert water out into the street or alley with the gutters and the others, blast tacks, wire.
Well, that's where I would like to start, and with grass season starting to rear its ugly head, now we'll, we'll find out?
It's in full swing, yeah.
What the educational attempt will do to notify the, the citizens and commercial mowers and, and those, and then we can see how that progresses over the, the next couple of months, and see if we're seeing more cases of this, clumpy grass being thrown out in the street, or we're seeing it decrease, and the education is starting to pay off, and people realize that they need to do something other than throwing it out.
And just for example, we're, we're, the committee's working on, again, more information, more communication, and the next newsletter coming out, we're looking to do an ad on, we, we were forwarded an ad from another city that had this, you know, some restrictions like this, one of them was, don't put grass in the street, well, what they meant by that, though, is, don't let your curb, grass go over the curb and get into the, where it starts breaking up the street, that's what they meant by it, but, but it was a good ad, the way, we're going to kind of copy that, and then put it in our newsletter, and perhaps in the newspaper, but that's one thing the committee's working on, so we can start with that.
So, is it possible that we could look at this being in the next newsletter, or something within some top, a certain timeframe, you're looking at this going out?
This, we can put this in the next newsletter.
And that'll be for May?
June first.
Or June newsletter?
It's a quarterly newsletter.
Okay.
You can go on Facebook and webpage now.
Can do that for now, but yeah.
And maybe, maybe have something in the paper addressing this particular item, so get it out there prior to the, the newsletter on June first, maybe work with that, and start the educational pro, process, and see what this looks like over the next, see what it looks like by midsummer, see if we've made some improvements, and it's not quite a, as big of a, as a problem as it can tend to be, so I'm, I'm, I'm agreeable to that. Gentlemen?
Sounds good.
All right, let's, let's follow through with that plan of attack, Bob Miller, thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right, next on the list, items for commission action, consider setting the date of June twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen, at five thirty PM, for a public hearing to consider the condemnation of the structure located at five thirteen, West Cottonwood Street, as dangerous and unsafe, Don?
Yes, we'd, we would like to set that time for consideration, for this as a dangerous and unsafe structure, and consider it for condemnation, that gives the owner some time in between now and then to decide, I've talked to him, we're supposed to get it boarded up and closed up, that'll give them some time to figure out what they want to do with the, with the structure.
The hole on the side is boarded up, I'm going to buy it?
Yeah.
Today to look at it, aerial and packet, and show the damage, it looked like the fire started on the outside?
Yeah, I believe so, I believe so, I think Chief probably has a little more information on that, I believe that's where it started. I believe that's where it started.
How extensive is the damage to the property?
Considering smoke, water and fire, probably were about fifty percent at least, somewhere around there.
Wasn't the fire just confined to that spot and maybe some smoke through the house?
Yeah, smoke throughout the house. But depends upon valuation and different things, so it's an approximation. But I think two months gives them time to decide what they're gonna do. If in between that time, they decide they want to repair it and get it done, we can be on our way to not having to condemn it, so.
Is the owner here?
I am not sure if the owner's here or not. Haven't been approached, but they will be here, so.
Gary?
You're good? I'm good.
All right, Don, I don't have any other further questions. Thank you, Don. All right, I entertain a motion.
I move to set the date of June twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen at five-thirty PM for a public hearing to consider condemnation of the structure located at five thirteen West Cottonwood Street.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B, consider setting a public hearing for May twenty-third, twenty nineteen at five-thirty PM to consider vacating an east-west alley connecting to Earl Street between Cedar Street and Coffeyville Avenue. A utility easement would remain for the vacated alley. Yes, and state your name.
Erin Trumbull.
Octavian Castarina.
All right, you're, you're first on my list. All right, you're the, you're the property owners?
Between the two of us, yes.
Between the two of us, okay.
And we, we want to build a garage.
Right there on those empty lots, on those four empty lots right there. And nobody uses those alleys anyway, and.
You understand, the only thing today is to set a hearing date.
Yes, for the hearing day.
Exactly. So we're not gonna make a decision tonight.
No.
You can if you want.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Jeff won't let us.
You're fine, it's just, like I said, we, we've mowed the alley since we've owned the property on the Cedar side. And then we wanted to build a garage, but under the ordinance, I believe, it has to have a home. So by vacating the property, we can use the home of ten twenty-four Coffeyville Avenue, which we own as well.
You own every property on both sides of the alley?
Yes, we own those four sections, four on each side.
The entire length of the alley?
No. About the entirety.
Okay. So you don't own the entire length of the alley?
No, we don't.
But you're wanting to close the entire length of the alley?
At least our part, anyway.
Yeah. From the apartments.
And they got kids playing in the middle of those apartments all the time, so I mean.
So there's really no need for the alley to be there either.
So the, the four empty lots are?
We own ten twenty-four.
Those four?
They actually live here. Yes, we live at seven forty-one and own two Cedar. They want the garage here.
Okay.
And I met with him and talked to him, and a garage is an accessory used to a structure. So when I found out, he actually was here, but when I found out he owned this, this lot, or this house, and this alley's never been opened, I said, well, if this was vacated, then this could all be one parcel. But I did explain to him, if you ever sold this house, the garage would go with this house. It wouldn't go with this house. Because this alley is actually open and utilized. There are utilities in this alley, and so we would retain the utility easement and, but it has never been approved. And I did talk to April, and she has no issue with it either, they have these properties.
Okay.
So we're talking about an undeveloped alley?
Yeah, it's never been, it's never been opened. So it is vacated or remain a utility easement, which is basically kind of what it is today. It's not officially.
Anything else you'd like to add?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right.
So have the other property owners been notified, other than them and Housing Authority?
No, there will be a notice published in the paper at least twenty days. Actually, I've already sent it to them. If you don't approve it, I'll have to call tomorrow and cancel it. So they have adequate time to publish the notice, but, but yeah, it'll be notified in the, in the paper and we can send them a notice too.
So we're really kind of not vacating an alley, we're vacating an alley right away, so to speak, since it hasn't been?
Well, it's a plat, but it's still platted. It was a platted alley, so it is called a vacation.
We don't have any gravel or anything there to say it's an alley?
No, we've mowed, we've mowed those, that alley since we've bought the property on the north on Cedar side for. There's several of these actually all over town.
Yeah. So we're giving up our right to make it an alley, although we've never had any intention of doing so?
Correct.
I can't see any reason not to do the hearing.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so basically, we're going to set a public hearing for May twenty-third, twenty nineteen at five-thirty PM to consider vacating an east-west alley connecting to Earl Street between Cedar Street and Coffeyville Avenue. So that's the motion I'm gonna make.
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, item C, considering authorizing the city attorney to prepare an agreement with Community Mission for Improved Housing and the Southeast Kansas Area Agency on Aging for the use of the former EMS building at two twenty-five East Main. And in order of the.
I got two more.
Okay, for this, for the signs? Okay?
Are they all from Jerry and Chris? Stacking the deck.
Okay. Let me see here. Hang on here a minute, I've got them out of order. That's my mistake here. I guess I don't, okay, first, in the order of, filled out a request, Jerry Brighten, I've got one, two, three.
How about we let Mr. Cowan start off?
Four, five, six. I've got seven people that would like to speak.
Dave?
Hey, Mayor. With your permission, I have some handouts for you gentlemen.
Okay.
He called us gentlemen. That was so nice of him.
Mayor, we were approached about this request, and we, I, these people really can speak more to it than I. I can tell you, as Fire EMS from Sean and I, on a daily basis, we serve our elderly citizens in this community. And there's a lot of widowed individuals in this community that we go assist up, we assist them in the bathroom, do different public services to them. And what these people are here to speak about and the services of Meals on Wheels is essential to that, their survival. A lot of these people, we ask them if they have family, and they say, yeah, I have a daughter in New York, or I have a kid in California. You know, sometimes they'll even be on the phone, 'cause that's who they've called and who's called us to come help them off the floor. So it is a vital service in our community. It's going to increase, the baby boomers are, you guys are getting to that age, we're gonna be coming over and helping you here pretty soon.
Wow. Man, wow, he just took it, he took a shot there. He saw it and he took it.
Yeah, it is a fact. I mean, it's expected to increase substantially in the next few years. And before I get myself in even more trouble, I'm gonna turn this over to Jerry Bright and Cindy Lane and let them speak.
I'm Jerry Bright with Community Mission for Improved Housing. We're a nonprofit organization that started in twenty fourteen, and so far, we've done thirty-five projects in Independence. We've raised right at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and put it back, back into the community as far as repairing homes, trying to make homes safer for the elderly so they can stay in their homes longer. Right now, we have a, a desk in the skill office, but we have privacy problems. You know, we have to talk about people's finances and we're right out in the lobby. We can't hold our board meetings there, and to be honest, we don't know from one day to next, how long we're gonna be able to stay there. So this building would help us tremendously. And we could also use the bays for storage. But we also want to team up with Meals on Wheels, for what they do, where they can use the kitchen area. And we're also considering trying to do something for senior citizens. There's, there's no senior citizens building here. And with these guys being down about eleven o'clock in the, in the morning, we could open up that area to the senior citizens from like eleven-thirty or twelve to five. And that would get a senior citizen somewhere to congregate. The bay area? I mean, the bay? No, no, in the kitchen area there that, that has the big room inside. Okay. But it would help us so much in what we do. These guys, I don't want to say a lot about Meals on Wheels because Cindy's here and I don't want to take away from her, but we would just hope that you guys will consider what we're trying to do. The building's been empty for, what, three or four years now? It's just sitting there deteriorating. We're willing to do some minimal maintenance, painting it, you know, cleaning it up, and whatever else we have to do to get in it. But I hope you will consider allowing us to do so. And I want to turn it over to Cindy.
Hi, I'm Cindy Lane. I'm the director of the Southeast Kansas Area Agency on Aging. We are a nonprofit agency that provides services to the elderly in our nine county service area. Independence is actually, we have a meal site there currently, and I understand some of the commissioners have had the opportunity to go there and see the property. The floor is slanting in substantially, and I did check into what it would cost to fix the building, and it is more than that property is worth. And we have to choose how to hand, how to spend our money too. And so that's why we were looking for another location in the Independence area where we could provide a hot meal to our seniors. I also have a letter from Kathy Shepherd, and if it's all right with the commissioners, if I go ahead and read that at this time?
How many pages is it?
It's a page and a half.
Just thought I'd ask. I think it was twenty-seven.
No, 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 no. Mayor and commissioners, I am writing this letter in support of the Southeast Kansas Area Agency on Aging and Community Mission for Improved Housing in their request for use of the city-owned building at two twenty-five East Main. The city has a unique opportunity to support two very important programs here in our community who improve the lives of many Independence residents. First, I want to address the importance of Meals on Wheels. I believe this is incredibly important for our seniors in Independence. Through my work, I help provide volunteers for the Meals on Wheels program throughout the area. Because of my experience, I can tell you how important receiving meals through the program can be for our senior residents. For all who receive these meals, it is a cost-effective way to meet nutritional needs. For many, this is the only time they will have contact with the outside world during their day. For some, the Meals on Wheels volunteer who come to the home literally saved their life when they had fallen, and there was no other volunteer checking to see if they were okay. Studies show that in Kansas, we have ten percent of our seniors who are threatened by hunger, and twenty, twenty-seven percent of our seniors live alone. Eight percent are living in poverty. It is also proven that inadequate nutrition and/or limited social contact has direct health consequences that affect the healthcare system and our economy. Meals on Wheels program are able to feed a senior for an entire year for less money than the cost of one day in a hospital and cheaper than ten days in a nursing home. The seniors who receive these meals are also some of our most at-risk individuals. It is my understanding that is if this site is not offered to the Meals on Wheels program, our seniors will only have frozen meals available to them. You may be wondering why it's important that receive a daily meal. Studies have indicated that people who receive daily-delivered meals show improved meal health, decreased isolation, increased feelings of safety, have improved self-reported health, and believe their ability to remain in their home has increased. Secondary outcomes have shown people receiving home-delivered meals on a daily basis also report reduced healthcare visits and reduced rates of falling, which all leads to a better quality of life. If you've ever visited a Meals on Wheels site, then you, if you've never visited it, then you should do so before you make a decision that will affect many in our community. I encourage you to ride along with Meals on Wheels drivers as they go along their daily route and see firsthand the people who wait outside, even on cold days, just so they can talk to the person delivering the meal. And if you think this only matters to seniors, I would beg to differ. There are many people my age trying to care for a parent while still working a forty-hour week. Having a meal delivered relieves the stress of the caregiver who is trying to figure out how to make sure their parents have a nutritious meal prepared for them. For Community Mission for Improved Housing, having this site available to them means security to continue to operate and improve the lives of independent residents who can't afford needed home repairs. It will be a place where they can store donated supplies that use, they use for their projects. It will be a place where they can manage their many projects and a place where they can easily meet with donors. We have all seen the difference Community Mission for Improved Housing has made in Independence and for the residents who have been the benefactor of this service. What a unique opportunity the City of Independence has to make use of this building by assisting two very deserving nonprofit agencies, who will in turn help many of our residents, many to have an improved life. In closing, I would say, Independence needs this building for our seniors. Almost every other community, even ones much smaller than Independence, have a place for seniors to go for congregant meals and to socialize. If we lose our Meals on Wheels site in Independence, we will probably never have it available again. Please consider making this building available for our Meals on Wheels program and Community Mission for Improved Housing. And most importantly, please consider the health and well-being of our residents who depend on those organizations. Kathy Shepherd, R.S.V.P. for County Coordinator.
Kathy, thank, thank you very much. Next on the list, I have, must be April.
We put a slide presentation together. It was kind of a collective group of us. I have, would like to speak when you, on a different matter, on this, from a citizen's side.
Oh, okay.
Okay? What I'm wanting to speak about is the use of it as a senior center. We, my day job is I work with many seniors between Pen Terrace and other senior citizens that live in our units. And one of the big issues, Pen Terrace, we have a place for them to congregate, but the others, we do not. And I know through an initiative that I've visited with the Chamber, they've had lots of questions, why do you not have a place for seniors? Interestingly enough, Lisa and I met a couple of months ago and have kind of started working on this. Cindy can attest, the Meals on Wheels being so important, we looked at allowing them to use the Pen Terrace facility for this. It just didn't work out. Doesn't meet their objective and it doesn't meet our objective. So I would really encourage you to consider this as a place for us to be able to allow our seniors to congregate. They need a place to go. They need to, as you hear, if they've got socialization, their mental health improves. If they're eating meals, they are healthier. We need a senior centers, citizen center for them to go to. Cindy and I have visited with the Southeast, I'm gonna say this wrong always, Southeast Kansas Age, area aging, you see on aging, I want to say it backwards. Kansas Age, Area Aging, you see, on aging, I want to say it backwards. On partnering with them, they will work with a, a sir, a sir employee to man the hours of it being open for the Senior Citizen Center, and we will work with them on programming to help this become a full Senior Citizen Center. And as that site becomes used and hopefully grows, we can add additional hours to it and look at additional funding opportunities through grant writing and that kind of thing. So it's just, I, we visited with what they have done in Coffeyville. It's just something that I fully believe we really need to consider for our, our people in the community who give us what we have. We have today what we have because what they did when they were our age. So we'd really like to give back to them. Thank you.
Thank you, April. Next on the list, I hope I get this name right, last name right. Patty Rife? Am I close? Patty, how are you?
I'm Patty Rife, and I live at Pen Terrace. We receive Meals on Wheels there. I brought a petition signed by the people that picked up their meals today, and a lot of them, that's really, they take what they have left over, and that's their evening meal as well. So I encourage that we continue to support the Meals on Wheels.
All right, Patty. Thank you very much. Okay, next on the list, Diane Woland-Snyder? Is Diane here? Yes. Diane, how are you?
I didn't know I'd have to speak if my name was on there. I'm Diane Woland-Snyder, and I was a little skeptical about the building and everything. And so I got together with April, and we got together with Jerry and went, looked at the building, and I think it would be ideal for the Meals on Wheels and to work as the, the, the community senior center. The reason I'm kind of involved with this is I've been working with the Meals on Wheels for, for seven years. I, I help them in, in dishing the food out to, to be distributed to all the routes. We have five, I think, five routes. And to go all over town, taking it to people, and then of course, we have one driver, two drivers, that take it to Pen Terrace and to Pen Manor for those people there that need them. I just think that this, you know, I, I looked at the building, and I thought, oh, this would work really well for, I think, everything, you know, everything. The kitchen area is a lot bigger than I thought it was from just what I heard. I think it would work very good, and I think it would be a good deal. I mean, you've got three, three organizations here trying to use one building that I think's a pretty good deal. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Diane. Okay, next, is it Mike Davis?
Yeah.
Yes. I wouldn't, I wasn't sure of the last name. I was having a little trouble reading it.
I'm wrong with my own name.
Okay, well, get in line, so have I. Continue to be.
The people pretty well covered the social part of it, but you know, like I said, it's, people our age has made the city what it is. And if you're going to talk about grass in the middle of the road, and then you compare it to people not having a place to go, I find a real discrepancy there. I think the people having a place to meet, and people socialize, and get a hot meal is just as important as grass in the road. I agree, grass in the road is bad, but so is people sitting at home surfing. And I think you need to do something about it. And that's the way I feel about it, and that's, you keep it short and brief, but that's pretty much where I am, my plane's spoken.
All right, Mike. I appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. All right, April Knatt.
This is my day job. What I'd like to talk about is, as being the Executive Director of the Pen Terrace Apartments, we have tenants there, we have 99 units, we have 30 to 40 meals are, are delivered there Monday through Thursday with a frozen meal for Friday. I will tell you, they are on fixed incomes. We can tell you, they make choices, whether to buy their medication or to pay for food. So we have a food deficit in our community. We have a food deficit in the Pen Terrace building. And those Meals on Wheels are vital for those tenants. And I can also tell you that staff can attest to the fact that when they have those meals, and they're participating in the Meals on Wheels program, they do visit the doctor less. The ambulance comes less to pick them up. When we have a tenant that is habitually falling, habitually going back and forth, and we can get them into a Meals on Wheels program, we see that time lapse greater. We see that, the times that they go for that medical assistance, a longer period of time. Once they can get a healthy meal, get a healthy habit of eating, and it's being provided, many of them just don't have the energy or the drive to cook. They just, so they won't eat. And so I can tell you, Meals on Wheels, as I told you earlier, we believe so strong in it, we tried to do it at the building, it just wasn't feasible. It's something that we firmly believe that this community needs to retain. They provide an incredible service, so I ask you to really consider this. Thank you.
Thank you, April. Okay, that's, that's it for comments. Everyone that's had a chance to speak, filled out a request, has spoken. All right, thank you for your, thank you for your comments. Gentlemen.
I think there's no question that there's a need, and it's a vacant building. The only question I have is the amount of lease, or how that comes up with, because I haven't heard anybody talking money.
I sat down too soon, huh? When we sat down with each of the organizations, we came up with, with this estimated lease revenue. This is $600 a month, split up between the, each entity. And so we're, we're looking at $7,200 a year in, in lease payments. The current utility budget that we have for keeping this building up and running, we, we have heating and air in the building right now, is $2,000. And I estimated based off of prior usage, when this facility was ran 24/7 for fire EMS. And I, I believe that the usage with these entities in the building would be no more than $5,000. And then I, I threw in, there's always miscellaneous expenses when you're starting up something new. So I put in $1,000 as a bu, a buffer, but I show that the net budget impact would actually be an additional $3,200 for the city that could go back into the facility for perhaps the senior center portion of it.
So what you're saying is the city's going to fund the majority of the expense on the building annually?
No.
No, we're going to make a profit.
Opposite, opposite, yeah. We will be receiving $7,200 for the use of this facility, and we're currently only putting in $2,000.
That's what, are you saying the city would maintain the utilities?
Yes, we would maintain our current, our, our, our current funding of the building as vacant of $2,000.
Why? Why not? If we're going to lease it, lease it, because you don't have anything for ADA modifications in there and general maintenance, you know, this is almost like the Building D, where we're seeing a number.
We faced this off of other leases that the city has, such as AWOL, the, the previous lease with the Lyons Den. Kelly, what is the other one that I'm missing? The tennis court, the tennis club. They're all very similar leases. We did speak on repairs and maintenance, and the Community Mission for Improved Housing has agreed to make the building ADA compliant through their donated services. And I don't think that the building would take much, we estimated that, right? But, but that would be covered by them, and also within the lease agreement, we would state that minor repairs are covered by the entities, and major repairs, such as, you know, a heating, cooling unit, or a new roof, or something like that, would still fall on the city, as it does now.
So you're proposing a contract with two organizations, and they're each going to pay $300 a month?
It's not 50/50, but yes.
Okay. And we're going to still cover utilities?
Yes.
We're going to, we're going to cover $2,000 of the estimated $5,000 utilities, is that right?
Well, yes, their lease, their lease revenue would cover the additional, so I mean, we're technically still paying.
The $5,000 is totally an estimate.
Yes, yes.
And why not just?
Let them cover the utilities?
Yeah. We, we're, we're ending up, it's one thing when you, you, you never lease property, that you can't control the utilities, because it, you end up in the end taking the, the hit for excessive utility. You know, if you're going to lease it, I don't have a problem leasing it to them as it is, but I don't think the city should have any expense at all. And, you know, the, the big issue, there's some ADA issues, that it's a city-owned building that are going to have to be specified, how they're going to be corrected, because it comes back, whether they do it or not, they need to be identified and made aware.
Touch on that at all? We have to talk about that.
Yes, we have identified the issues, and I believe you and Jerry spoke about it, and I think he was going to work with you, and I think you, you kind of offered him some solutions to that, to address those issues.
I pointed out.
Yeah, and so.
Some of them.
Yep. So, I mean, they're willing to take care of that, and we, they feel like they can cover those issues, and we have a plan for each of the areas where the steps, and for the front entrance, and some of the modifications they're going to do there to alleviate those ADA concerns.
You know, for us to rent it, I, I think it'd be great to utilize support all this, but the utilities, it has, I don't agree that it should remain in the city's name. I think our responsibility should end as, as a, a building owner with the maintenance, typically the HVAC equipment, you know, general maintenance in that manner, not utilities and, and all that.
In that case, my recommendation would be to lower the, the lease payments, because these, these entities have limited funding, and, and they basically came to us and said, this is all of what we can spend. And if, if we are still charging them the $600 in rent, they're not going to be able to, to meet those additional costs. You know, obviously, you can see from this that we're not expecting the utilities to be greater than their, their rental payments. So we would have to structure the deal in a, in a different manner so that, that they could still afford it.
Yeah.
I've been doing energy consulting for 40 years, and if you give somebody free energy, they use so much more than if they're responsible for their bill themselves. So I'm, I'm with Leonard on this one. I don't care what we charge them for rent. I mean, I'd love to have them in there if it suits their needs, but I would like them to cover the utilities.
Can we charge them no rent?
I'd actually draw it up as preliminary lease, and then discussions continued, it kept changing, and I said, let me know when you're done talking, but.
Right.
I drew it up as no lease payment, but they pay the utilities, pay the everyday maintenance, stuff like that. It's similar to what we do on the tennis house and stuff like that, but it's whatever.
The tennis club house, they don't pay any utilities on that one. Maybe not, they didn't pay no utilities.
I said it's similar.
Yeah.
It's a little bit different.
I don't think it's used hardly compared to what this would be used.
You know, I think there's, there's some things that you can put into it that you can get in kind, too. There has to be, there has to be a rate. I don't think we can lease it for nothing. The rate can be established, but then there can be some in-kind work on the building that's going to offset some of what they would pay. You know, I'm just throwing this out.
Have to be careful about the amount you charge, causing it to go back on the tax rolls and incurring real estate tax. I did call the appraiser on this one, or sent her an email, actually, and ran by the, the no rent. I didn't know you were going to want to charge rent. She said that would not cause it to go back on the tax rolls, so that would be okay. Now, at what level, they might, because they, they came after us a couple of years ago, if you'll recall those vacant lots, and we did prevail at the state level.
And the house across the street, and even Building D.
Yeah, I mean, that's their job, that's their job.
Right.
And I just didn't want to have this go inadvertently go back on the tax rolls and incur, you know, $2,500 a year in real estate tax. So if we don't charge rent, I know it won't. Depending on how much you charge, I'd want to run it by the county.
Well, yeah, I think, I think that's.
Hi, this is Cindy Lane again, and I just wanted to address the, the expenses. Essentially, in most of our communities, the cities provide not only the building, but also the utilities for the building. If, I, I know that we had talked about having possibly some programming going on in there. If, if I'm going to have to pay, I mean, I've already committed to $500 a month, but if I can't afford to pay the utilities for the city having programming in there, just, just for, and we're in the building Monday through Thursday, just four days a week, and a very limited period of time. So I just wanted you to be aware that most of the communities, and most of the communities in the state of Kansas, the Meals on Wheels program doesn't pay anything to be providing the meals in that location.
I guess we're, since we don't have that program, we're kind of grasping at straws to understand. I've, I've worked with other communities through the years that had senior citizen centers, but I'm not for sure how that organization was set out. A lot of them were getting grants for the building in initial construction, but the operation, and, you know, at this point, like I said, I, I think the, the lease agreement, the, the payment is still negotiable. You know, I, I think we need to support the program, but I think in, in the end, we, we can't ask the taxpayers to pay for all the utilities and that, too. We, we've just got to come out with a plan that works for everybody.
Right. I just wanted you to understand how it works, because we have a nine-county service area. I know how it works in, in a lot of our communities.
Yeah, yeah, if we're using it four days a week, that's, you shouldn't carry the brunt of the, the expense.
Cindy, where do you currently get your funding from now?
We do not fund any senior centers whatsoever. The, we receive federal funds, we receive state funds, and we receive county funds. Our county funds are used to match the services we provide in your counties. So we provide not only Meals on Wheels, but we provide bathing to people who need bathing. We, we provide housekeeping to people who need that. We provide some disease prevention, health promotion programs. We provide legal services. So there's a lot of services we provide in the communities, and the only way we can do that is to utilize our county money to pull down the federal money to do that. So that's what we utilize our funding for. Meals on Wheels program, I know we had it on the overhead, but 25% of the Meals on Wheels program has to come from, the other one before that, the one before that. Okay? The average donation in Independence is 40 cents a meal. So that, and so 25% of the cost on the Meals program in getting the food delivered, paying for the vehicles, and being in the community, has to come from the counties as well as the donations. But like I said, our average donation is 40 cents a meal. And last year, in Independence alone, we provided 21,811 meals. That's just in Independence.
When you talk about federal, state, and county funds, what is, what does that amount to roughly on an average basis, yearly basis?
I don't have that number for, because I do everything by counties, not by a city. But the, the cost of the meals, 50, it's about 50% is paid for by federal. but the, the cost of the meals, fifty, it's about fifty percent is paid for by federal money, twenty-five percent is paid for by state money, the balance is county money and donations.
I didn't quite understand, will you be using this facility to do cooking?
No. We will not be, very good question, yeah, we have a meal site, or a kitchen in Coffeyville that makes the meals, so we, they will be bringing, we are not gonna be cooking, the only, the only cooking they would do is if for some reason the food wasn't up to the proper safety temperature, when it came in, we might have to reheat it, but we will not be cooking, and we will not be doing dishes there, we send it all back to Coffeyville, and they take care of that, so.
So you just put, you just put the meals together, a question for Dave, you've identified, okay, let me back up for a little bit, if the city goes through and leases this facility out, the ADA improvement, if I'm wrong, correct me, but the ADA, improvements that need to be made to meet ADA, those will have to be identified, and those will have to be
Corrected, yes.
Be addressed and corrected before the building can actually be.
Which CMIH has agreed to take care of that.
Okay, do you have any idea what kind of money you're talking about?
We're talking the front entrance, the two step downs, there may be, depending on what modifications they do at the front, I think they identified a doorway that may have been narrow, that they could take off some trim to get through, and some bathrooms, maybe designating one of the bathrooms as ADA, some handrails, and different things like that would need to be done, so, yeah, we, we were thinking in the twenty-five hundred dollar range, because a lot of this is gonna be, we believe the steps can be handled with some ramps. And wood, yes, so, I think it, with Leonard's assistance, if he's willing to help them, and their volunteer work, and they could, they're gonna be able to handle that.
I did have a chance to take a look at the facility, it looked like the, the bathroom, refresh my memory, other than some handles that were, were not in the bathroom, the actual entryway to the bathroom was, was wide enough.
It, it is wide enough, but there is a threshold there that would need to probably be removed, so that there was no hump for them to go over, so, a couple, I don't think, and Leonard could probably speak more to it, to me, there's anything major, like, the more, I think the front entrance of knocking that out and putting a, a concrete there to smooth that ramp out there to get in the front door.
Yeah, there was a step there, and.
Yeah.
Interior two ramps were needed, and the hallway, there might be some work right at that door going.
Right.
Back into the, it was definitely too narrow.
Right.
The turning radius in there.
Yeah, so, the nice thing about all that right there, I mean, it's all two before, Sheetrock easily can be modified, I mean, we built it in nineteen ninety-six, so, I know it can easily come back out, so.
So with the cost estimate of twenty-five hundred dollars, you're looking at the, at the, that being taken over by Jerry's group, that they would provide the supplies and the labor to?
Yes, and in kind, they may be able to get a lot of that done in kind, so.
Okay.
In addition to that, because we are dishing meals there, it will have to be compliant with the Health Department, so if we need to put in additional sync, or whatever we need to do to make that compliant, that our agency is committed to doing whatever they request.
Now, I was also told that there was a leak in the Bay Area.
Yes, the, my guess is the skylight out there, that probably needs some, some recaucking, that has a new roof, Kelly, what was it, two thousand and three, we looked that up the other day, has, I think it was two thousand and three or four, had a brand-new roof put on it by Mr. Bateson, and the area that Jerry told me about, I believe, by the skylight, and probably those front window areas.
Okay, does it, does it have a backup generator behind that building?
Yes, it does, that does.
Okay, come from the core engineers, the government?
It's actually, we replaced it, I think it has a brand-new.
Kohler.
Kohler, hasn't, we haven't used it for several years, but it is, last time it ran, it's in good service.
Has anyone actually been up on the roof over the last few years?
I have not been up there, probably in two years.
In, in two years?
Probably.
Okay, I was just wondering, I know from two thousand and three, we've had hell a few times here in the city, so.
They were assessed during the major hailstorm, they, and Kelly, we would probably have to go back and look to see, they did get up there and look at that during, when we did all that hail report. Yes.
And there wasn't a, a damage claim turned in on the roof at that time?
No.
Okay. Sure, go ahead.
I just wanted to state, too, that on, on our Meals on Wheels group, we get there about eight in the morning, and we're out of there by eleven-thirty, and that's Monday through Thursday, so we're not talking about a great deal of time or expense on utilities, we just need a spot to do our thing and get our food ready to, to go out to the people.
So, the senior citizen group, the, for the senior citizen center, who's operating it?
Well. We're a partner, we're gonna partner.
We're partnering, Cindy had said through this SEKAA, because I mess it up, they are willing to work with a sir employee through the senior, what is Senior Reentry Act, Employment Act for Senior Citizens, and so the employee would work underneath her, the Housing Authority would partner with her to make sure that we have programming, we have those activities for seniors to have in a location where they can congregate, that type of thing, so it'll be a partnership between the Housing Authority and the area agency on aging.
The, the good thing about that, too, is that person's in training, so while we have them, we don't have to pay for them, we're utilizing the, the federal resources as a training activity, and that, that person's salary does not come out of either of our budgets.
Yeah, except when you look at three groups using the building, and if you start looking at the four days a week, that you're gonna use it in the limited hours, then another group is gonna use it longer, and another group, it sounds like you're the only one with money.
Barely money.
That's.
Well, I mean, that's why I said really, five hundred dollars is the upper limit of what we can afford.
But the others are just riding on your coattail?
Hey, you know, if they're willing to work on the building, you know, I mean, it, it really indeed is a partnership.
Right, it's a partnership that all these entities who work with and for this precious group of people in our community, we're willing to work together to make it happen, and so we felt like it was that important to bring this to you, it, it was kind of a perfect storm of an opportunity, and so that's why all these entities, actually, if you, truth be known, whether you wanna shoot me or not, I was the one that came up with EMS building for this purpose, because we had been searching for so long.
I think it's an ideal building, but just to make it work financially for, you know, I, because I don't think we can commit city funds to the operation of the program without research of how the senior citizens programs work in other communities, and get all that lined, lined out, but.
And I made a lot of phone calls and asked those questions, and that's, that's kinda, because our goal was try to be at budget zero impact for the city, you, you wouldn't do any different than what you're currently funding, I mean, that was one of the things that we really talked about.
Which is why the two thousand dollars is, is still in there, because that's what we're currently doing, we, we're going for zero impact, no more, no less.
If you lease it to a community mission, which is the way I drew it up first, and let them have authority, like sublease to whoever, let them worry about that, you can put a clause in there that the city knows subleasing without written permission or something, you're gonna save the two thousand a year you're currently paying on utilities, and they're paying utilities, so it's, it's actually a savings to the city.
Yeah, because of, what the city is paying now will go back into the general fund.
Right, is that, I mean, that's why I originally drew it up, I don't know if that's acceptable or not, but, no, no rent, just pay utilities.
Sounds like leasing it to one, and then subleasing to the others.
Let the community mission work out its sub arrangements, because when it was first brought to me, the Red Cross was in the mix, and things have changed a little, but that's fine, and, and things may change again, I don't know.
But with that, the community mission is gonna be responsible for utilities?
Yeah, and then I'll work that out with the subleases, do you, does your agency, the S?
SEKAA.
Does that have to be listed as a tenant on the agreement in order to get funding?
In order for me to ensure it, yes.
So we would want the contract to be.
Ensure it, what kind of insurance are you talking about?
Well, I mean, I have to have liability insurance, and I have to have contents, at the very least, on that, in addition to that, my volunteers are insured.
If you're listed as a sublease in the contract, would that be sufficient?
Now, you know, I, I wanted to let you know, too, that I brought one of my program staff with me tonight, we have provided programs in Independence, we have utilized different buildings, because there was no place that we could have, so we've done fall prevention classes in Independence, we've done Tai Chi in Independence, but we have not, I mean, our building was not sufficient for that, so we had to have them in different locations.
What are your plans for your, for seven-ten West Chestnut, for the building you have, that building that you own now?
What, somebody suggested a match, you know?
Give it to the fire department.
Yeah, they, they could be very busy, no, actually, you know, we don't own, I mean, this is one of the few buildings we own, and we are not wanting to own buildings, because then I put, I put money in the maintenance of buildings rather than providing programming and food and services for our elderly, so.
Right.
Community missions, ours will be the same as theirs, so there's no added time involved in it, the only way that that will be is if we do put a senior citizen building, or group in there, but I feel like personally, the city should be involved in at least that, you know, you got, all these people that's paid taxes for fifty, sixty, seventy years, and now they're to the age, they need a little help, and you're, I'll stop.
Well, we gotta look at it as a business for our part of the city, that we can't, we've gotta treat every group the same, and we gotta look at our dollars, because when we spend more, and just, you know, like, the utilities, if we don't control the thermostat, then it always goes more expensive.
We'll let you do that, put a lock on it, just set it somewhere.
We don't wanna pay the utilities.
Well, if you would, if you could knock the lease down.
Well, that's what I.
To nothing, then we could probably handle.
I think we're, we're at the point of negotiating how much we lease it at, you know, I don't think that's been established, I think we need to get all the parameters put together, and make sure it works, it works for you guys, and it works for the city, I think that's our, our main goal, that at the end of this, we're, we're both satisfied with what we come up with.
Just a, a comment to make sure, I mean, I think we worked it out, that we're, Jerry's organization could be the lead, and they're the 501(c)(3).
I would actually suggest that their, their organization be on, be the, the leasing.
I saw, I assume you're a 501(c)(3) as well. The, the issue becomes rent, charging rent, that's when we may get into it, county taxing the building, if we don't charge rent, then we wouldn't be in that, it wouldn't even come up as far as, as Jeff mentioned, he checked, if there's no rent for that, then there wouldn't be any issue with property taxes from the county, if we do charge rent, that could come up, they could come back and say, you're charging rent, just like we do, you know, with other properties where we rent that we pay taxes on, that's the situation we'd be in, so my suggestion is to, you know, they handle the utilities, and, and at no rent cost for it. I mean, I use the word serendipity here, I, I, you know, I just think, when this initially started, it was just Jerry come and say, hey, there's this building out there, how about, how about using it, yeah, good idea, and then there were other organizations, you know, Red Cross, and right now, I think we, I use the word serendipitous, that these groups come together for that one facility, can get so much out of it, more than actually, you know, you're putting into it, and, because I've had comments, I've had letters sent to me about, you know, we don't provide anything for senior citizens here in Independence, they do in Coffeyville, and so, it is a need, and I just, I think it's a, a good opportunity to use that facility, if we can work out that, that rate structure, or lack, or, or no rent, to keep it off the tax rolls.
And even, even check that, because you can't use avoidance to, by not charging anything, say, well, then I, I don't owe property tax, because it still has a value, we need to get that worked out with the appraiser to make sure, because even on Building D.
I have it in black and white, it's worked out.
Then if we charge no rent, then we're not gonna have to pay property tax.
That's great, I sent that email to the city staff.
Well, I didn't see it in our packet.
Well, no, because, it's changed a little, the tenant's changing, now, now it's changing again, I think, so.
Okay, so it sounds like where we're at is, you need to get the agreement put together, working with the parties involved, and let us have it to look at, to make sure it's gonna, gonna work, and then we can make a decision.
Sounds good.
All right, I have a, a question for April, April, are you involved in any type of grant writing?
I do. I'm part of the, there's an initiative here in town for grant writing that's a regional initiative, Lacey, Kelly, and I, all three are participating in that, and then I also write grants through my employment.
Okay, this particular being its Meals on Wheels, is there the potential of some funding from USDA?
That's gonna be underneath her umbrella.
There, Kansas Department of Notting Aging and Disability used to provide some funding for building senior centers, that is gone by the wayside, so it, I mean, there are no funds that I know of that can be used that way, now, if you have some city grant funds, and I know, you know, if there's things like that, but there is no funding that I have access to that will help build a building.
And I, just to go off of this, you know, part of this is, is, it's an opportunity for us to see, we have a facility that we can see, you know, we hear there's a need, we've talked about a need, so, you know, this is an opportunity for us to tip our toe into it, and really see if it's utilized, and as that proceeds, and we see more of a need, it helps you with focusing on your budget, it also helps us, yes, we can go for grant funds, we could go look at facility needs and that kinda thing, so, as your, your question on grant writing, we would get aggressive and start looking to see if there were opportunities out there, absolutely, I know through CDBG, there is for a community center, so, as we're kinda doing this, yes, we're focusing on seniors, because we have a youth center, so we're focusing on a senior center, but maybe we can look as the potential for growth, change that to a community center, to where we have all sorts of activities available, so, and CDBG does allow that. I have checked into that.
My next question, and, because I'm not real familiar with, with the Independence Housing Authority, but would this be something that the Independence Housing Authority would through some way or another, come up with some support? would through some way or another, come up with some support for this facility?
I can't speak to that on a financial level. I can ask my board. I will tell you that the board is fully supportive of this effort. As I said, when the Meals on Wheels became an issue, it was something that we looked at bringing to Pinteras. There's challenge with the facility absolutely meeting their needs, as well as our residents. That's their community room, their, their kitchen, and they have a lot of activities that they do collectively, they do in the mornings from eight to noon. And so when we posed it to them, they were kind of in a quandary over that. You know, we're gonna lose our activities that we do here if we give this space up. So, you know, financially, I can't answer you that today. I'd have to take it back to my board and see what the need, you know, what, what they could do. I know that we are willing to put staff time into helping with activities, so.
I'm just gonna throw this out there, just because I'm gonna throw it out there. What if that facility, could that facility end up in the hands of the, i.e. Independence Housing Authority?
They can't on real estate, it's entitled to the city.
Titled to the city, but, but-
But you wanna change that.
But they could-
Be managed?
Could be managed. Is, would that not be right?
It could be something that's a possibility. Like I said, it's not something I can speak to, yeah, we'll do it. I need to take that, I don't make the decisions, the board does.
Sure.
I'm more than happy to take that opportunity to the board and see. I think we'd have to look and see how that looked. You know, they're, they may not wanna take a building and have to put a new roof on. They may, you know, that may not be something that they're willing to take it on themselves. They may wanna partner with the city. I don't have that answer, but I can absolutely visit with them about it, for future, absolutely.
Sure. If, if we're gonna look at this, being that it serves the entire community, then maybe we oughta get as many entities involved in it collectively and see if we can't improve, improve the program, improve either through grants or through some type of funding of some sorts to where, to where this is shared by a lot of people, a lot of entities, and it'll improve the standing of their ability to, to deliver, to provide the Meals on Wheels and provide activities. It'd be a collaboration of not only the city, but Independence Housing Authority. Chamber, we have a lot of organizations here. You know, we have Love Independence Day coming up on the twenty-seventh. Maybe this would be a good opportunity to, to start and look at sharing some of that love toward the Meals on Wheels, Jerry's group, the Senior Citizen Center.
Well, if we'd had this in place, we were looking at painting it, but we didn't have this all in place in time for this year.
Sure, but would you be willing to, to take that back to your board?
Absolutely. I'll take any request of the board.
And then, and come back to us and, and tell us what, what you've been able to come up with, and, and the Chamber, and see if you collectively put your heads together, maybe we can spread this out over a broad umbrella. Still accomplish the same thing, get everything done, to get more, more entities, more support from the community at large to provide the service, because I, I, you know, I had a sister that delivered Meals on Wheels to McPherson, so I'm familiar with the program. It's, it's something that, that is vital to all communities that depend on this. But let's, let's look at it in a broader range, and let's see what we can do, community-wide, not just city of Independence, but community-wide organizations here.
Well, I think you see that already going on here, with several organizations.
Right, but I'm looking at, at dollars, dollars. Dollars seems to be the critical point. You know, you always have a lot of-
So you're asking for the Housing Authority to financially cover everything?
I'm just asking-
They've got the dollars covered. That's not an issue.
I'm just asking if, what kinda support they would be able to be willing to give toward this.
Okay, I, you know, like I said, they are currently giving staff support to it and that kinda thing. I can go back and see if there is, you know, I, I don't know that I fully understand exactly what you're asking the Housing Authority to do, so maybe if you can shoot me some specific information, so it's not so broad, I know exactly what you're asking the Housing Authority, then absolutely. Housing Authority is always working to partner with somebody, especially to assist our most vulnerable in the community.
Sure, sure.
I think what you're talking about is financially, because if you're looking at five hundred dollars a month for utilities, that's gonna be pretty tight. That's, what are you gonna do when you come up shore?
Well, I, I wanted to address something else. I mean, our building, I told you the floor is sinking in. We were really hoping that maybe something had happened before the first of June. We have two small air conditioning units in that building.
Yeah.
It's-
I'm comfortable, ladies. Yes.
So, you know, and I have a concern about safety in that building. I also think that if we go downtown, we're gonna be more visible, and we probably will pull more people in to utilizing the Meals on Wheels. I would almost guarantee you, there's people that are not using the meals that really could, and maybe even within walking distance of that area, so.
Yeah, it's a good location.
Right.
It'd be nice to utilize it.
Okay. All right. Everyone that's come up to speak, thank you. Thank you for the input. So, gentlemen, we're back to working through-
I think they just need to get us a proposal written up to look at.
Okay. Okay.
I was whispering.
Okay. We need the proposal written up and then presented to us so we can look at it.
Yep.
And then we can-
I've, I've got one. I could tweak it and actually email rough copies tomorrow Monday, probably.
Take your time, tweak it so we only look at one.
Well, you guys would be tweaking it now.
Whatever I send out, I'm sure it'll get tweaked again.
Yeah, sure. I got a new red pen.
I'm colorblind.
Okay, all right. Jeff, if you would do that, then we'd get a chance to take a look at it, and if we have any, any questions, we can get back to you. So, thank you all for that, had made comments on, on this.
No? No.
I take direct orders.
Okay, so, okay.
I have one more comment from the crowd.
Yes.
You know, I'm, I'm not the smartest tech in the, in the box, but from what I'm hearing, I've never been to one of these meetings before, been in Independence since nineteen sixty-eight. In my opinion, you're kicking the can down the road on this Meals on Wheels deals, and the road is running out, because this lady right here is telling you that she can't keep the meals and wheels in the building that we're in now.
And what we said was, we're considering using the EMS building, allowing them to use it. We just have to have an agreement drawn up. So, yeah, we're interested in utilizing that building for Meals on Wheels.
We directed our attorney to move forward with that agreement.
There, again, I think the wheels in the city turn very slow.
Absolutely.
And I think you need to speed those wheels up. That's my opinion.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Yeah. Sir, 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 excuse me. Would you identify yourself, your name?
I'm sorry?
Identify yourself.
My name is Orland Smith.
Orland Smith, all right.
And I live East Town. I'm not a, I'm not a citizen of Independence. I haven't been, but I'm not that.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Orland. All right. D, consider an agreement with the Church of God for ADA improvements at Cypress and Irving. Dave?
Mayor, twenty eighteen ADA Phase Four project was approved, and we had our pre-construction meetings last week, but we were still working on one last agreement with the Church of God, which Mr. Kaiser is not here, but he did agree to it. At his ramp, at the ramp at that corner, they had asked if the city, if they paid for it, would do, finish the concrete work that goes over to their ADA entrance. And if we did not do that, there would have been a wall there. So, by them paying for this work, they don't have to have a wall where the ramp would have been, and it takes care of that. We originally thought the cost would be about five thousand, but after we got the prices in, and Sean and I met with Reverend Kaiser at the church, and they went over it, Sean believes the cost is gonna be around four thousand, which they are in agreement with, and he's willing to work with C. Lacey on the payment arrangements and all that. So, they're willing to sign it, and I can, I know Commissioner Koflic, you had some questions?
Yeah, on the, the wording on the agreement, city agrees to construct for the church an ADA ramp and sidewalk, providing ADA accessibility to the structure on church's property. It alludes more to a complex structure than it looked like when I drove by and from the drawings, all we're doing is doing some transitional concrete work from-
That's basically what we're doing.
-the public walkways to their building. But when you look at, at our wording, we're stating more like accessibility to that to the basement, is that to the main level? It's got a broader, so, you know, just if that wording would change to just reflect that transitional-
Transitional sidewalk?
Right.
Yeah.
Walkway, I think.
Is that doable, Jeff?
Yeah, I was going off an email from August two of twenty eighteen, and I just quoted it verbatim, and I don't know if they had the plans yet. So if you wanna approve it, subject to some wording change, I can reprint a page tomorrow. I just don't, you tell me what the wording you want. I-
Transitional sidewalk?
I've never seen the plans on this, so.
I think when we first had the agreement, the plans were a little different or hadn't been finalized, but.
It says, "City will construct for church instead of ADA ramp sidewalk," laid up, just transitional-
The city will, let's see, the city's planning ADA improvements. City agrees to construct for the church the transitional concrete walkways tying the public walkways to the existing church entrances.
Okay. The transitional concrete walkways to what?
I'll write it and send it to you.
Okay. I mean, that's the only thing that changes that sentence, and the rest is okay.
Just so once, I'll send it to you. It'd be easier.
I have it too.
Okay. Yeah, because I kinda lost track too.
The city agrees to construct transitional concrete walkways tying the public walkways to existing church entrances.
On what street is that? Twelve?
Irving and-
Irving and Cypress.
Cypress.
Irving and Cypress.
Irving and Cypress?
Yeah.
You wanna give me a directional form?
No, because that indicates west. Those two would be at the west corner.
All right.
Will you send me that, Kelly?
Yes.
Okay.
So you'll send it? Okay.
Okay, so-
There were two references on, on page one, in the whereas, and then item one.
Yep. Okay. So the motion would be to move the mayor to sign the agreement with the Church of God for ADA improvements at Cypress and Irving?
Subject to the wording changes that were given to Kelly.
Okay. So that's, that's the motion I'm gonna make. What he said and she said and he said.
That'll work.
All right, if you understand that. Now, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Mercy. Item E, consider text amendments, amendments to Appendix B zoning of the city code relating to number one, Article Eight, signed regulations. Item two, Appendix A, listing of permitted and conditional uses relating to bus, garaging and equipment maintenance. Three, Article Ten, special provisions applying to miscellaneous conditional uses. And, item four, Article Four, rules and definite, rules and definitions.
Wow.
Yes.
I want to see Rusty here. The Rusty Honorable Superintendent at the school came to the Planning Commission and requested this text amendment be considered. The Planning Commission actually made two recommendations, one that was on a, I believe it was a five to one vote, to allow it in the R4 district as a conditional use permit, and then there was a second unanimous vote to allow it in the C2 and C4 with a conditional use. A conditional use permit would still require them to go through the same process you go through with the rezoning, so there would be some checks and balances there. And if you have any questions, I can try to answer them for you.
First, what about the directional signing text amendment under signed regulations? Is that not being considered?
No, the, that item died for a lack of a motion, so they did not make any recommendation. There was no motion either way on that.
So we're not looking at any change of that then tonight?
No, they didn't recommend any changes.
Okay. You were just giving us-
Yeah, I just, it was all in the same staff report, because I did the publication together, so I just gave you all the information.
Okay.
They're still interested in that Twenty-first Street location, which is why they made this request, to do this in lieu of rezoning.
Okay.
Well, go ahead, your mayor.
Okay. I had talked to Rusty Arnold about this. Oh, it's been a few weeks ago, and I was looking at some additional sites to, that he had considered to look at all the, the zoned areas of the city that were M1 that would accommodate a facility like the Bus Barn. And he had mentioned that they had identified, I believe, eighteen different sites that, that they had looked at, and for one reason or another, they, none of them seemed to be able to, to either fit or meet the needs of the, the school district itself. I even talked to him about the West Laurel Industrial Park, being that the roadways are already in place, they're handling bigger traffic, or not bigger traffic, but bigger vehicles from the FedEx facility, which is located there. And that, that allowed them access to West Main. There was a signal light there that they would, could use to, to come in on West Main headed east and to get to various locations for bus routes. And that, that property was available. There was a question about a railroad crossing, though, that I had forgotten about, and I guess there's some material that, that comes in by rail for MatCor and for Hackney. And the times I've been out there, I've not seen any rail traffic blocking that entry and exit point off of Hackney, Hackney Drive there. But evidently, there has been a time or two when he's been out there, and there has been blockage of that, and their concern was that they didn't want to get the buses tied up from picking up children or being able to head out the, the door in the morning. So that was a concern for them, but, but, you know, we, we've already looked at this. But, you know, we've already looked at this, and we had had talked about spot zoning issues. And that when we looked at the comprehensive plan for Independence, that particular area was identified as R four. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe when Pheasant Point initially had acquired the property, they were actually looking at a Phase Two for Pheasant Point. So they actually owned not only the current land where Pheasant Point is located at now, they also owned land south of that particular property that they were going to use to develop Pheasant Point Phase Two, if that ever had come about. So when you start looking at areas of the city, you know, we don't have a lot of areas identified where we can put a housing development, or in this case, a multi-dwelling apartment availability into the city. We have lots here and there, and I think the last parcel of land that we required was from the country living place that we purchased. And somewhere down the road, you know, year two or somewhere in the future, you know, that is land available that will be used, that we can, we can, the Independence Housing Authority, when they can determine, and put houses in that particular area. So, you know, we're limited by the north, by the river. We're limited by the east, by the river and the city limits. South, we know where the city limits are on South Town. And west, you know, we're limited as to what type of land available, availability that we have. And so, you know, my advice to Rusty was to go back and revisit all the areas that are already zoned for M one, that would be able to handle a facility like that. And that's how, that's how I left it. So that was my take on this.
One thing, if you did allow it as a conditional use in the C two or C four, which is your highway commercial areas, it would open up more locations that they could look at also. And it would require the conditional use permit, which would go through the same rezoning process. So that is something you may want, wish to consider too, so they're not just limited on the M one and M two.
But does that not open that up to land that they, where school facilities are now? Land available, does that not open that up for them to put that bus facility on school property?
They can do that now without any rezoning as an accessory use to the school. So they could put that on, on school property as an accessory use.
They could put the bus barn in the high school parking lot.
They could.
What requirements would they have to meet to do that?
It's an accessory use, I mean, it's, the main purpose of that, the main use would be the school, and the bus, bus is something that would serve that, that would be an accessory use, and it meets that definition. I think they don't want to put it in that area, because it's near residential and more highly densely populated, population and that kind of thing. But, I mean, they could, they could do that. I think they're concerned it'll create some other issues in those areas.
Well, I guess, I feel it's kind of coming in the back door usually when you're going to establish a business. First, you look at the zoning that's set up to allow that, and you purchase your property there. There, the lot that has been explained was shown in the industrial park. It has, still has two exits out. The gravel road that the pipeline company used from their parking lot, and I'm not for sure if that's Hackney Drive. So, you know, if the siding was blocked and you couldn't go out to Laurel Street, you still have another way out. But to just start changing with conditional uses, it opens up another, whole nother issue that I don't feel comfortable with us going down that route. Then it, you know, it's more or less buying a piece of property and then working to get it zoned for what I want to use it, instead of looking at the zones that it's allowed in.
Gary? Okay. You know, I've. I tend, I tend to agree with what you said, Leonard. It's like we put the cart before the horse, and we've come to the realization that the horse needs to be in the lead. And we're trying, we're trying to change it to make that now. If there were no areas available that this structure could be put on, then that might, that might bring up other concerns that we would, we would want to consider. But I like the West Laurel site. And I don't know how much of that, an issue that, that road would actually be blocked from time to time. But, but when the pipeline was there, they used that road. It's just, it's where Enterprise Drive Road ends and the gravel road begins. But that, that road, that gravel road is open all the way to, to an exit to get onto Peter Pan. So, you know, I'm just not, I'm not comfortable with this. I think we stayed at our reservations when this came up to be rezoned here earlier. And I'm reluctant to make changes at this time myself. I know that's probably not what they want to hear, but, but that's, that's my feeling on that also. Like I said, I don't know what the other sites were that they looked at. I don't know, we didn't get into the reasoning why, out of eighteen sites, why one of those weren't able to, to work out for the school district. That I don't know. I don't know where the sites were, what was looked at.
I think we have to look at the comprehensive plan, although it was, what, nineteen eighty-five?
Eighty-two.
When, what was it, eighty?
Eighty-two.
The, the concept of designating areas and projecting has not really changed. We're not growing, maybe expanded some residential in the northwest, but traffic counts, I believe Kelly said, are off. And, you know, that's maybe something we need to look at. Instead of a whole new comprehensive plan is maybe authorizing some traffic studies to update portion of it. But. So are you asking?
So with that, we just table the.
Or a motion to deny.
Or a motion to deny the text amendment? Okay, so that's the motion you want?
I'll make a motion that we deny the text amendments.
Okay, do I have a second?
Go ahead.
Second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, item F, consider approving a resolution to adopt a formal procurement policy.
All right. The purpose of this policy is to ensure ethical, effective, and accountable practices are used for sourcing, procuring, or other supply chain related activities. It's critical that sound management of public funds is applied for competitive bids and procurement transactions demonstrating open, fair, and transparent methodologies. In drafting this policy, we researched other municipalities to find best practices. The draft policy provides support of those findings and provides a framework for city staff to foster effective spending and oversight. In connection with the adoption of this policy, city staff will be implementing an electronic procedure to streamline the approval, storage, and processing of purchase orders. And this will provide a means to track our compliance and help efficiently and effectively manage our purchases. And you all received a copy of the draft before this meeting. So do you have any, any questions?
Yes. I have a.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I have a citizen that would like to address this issue, Lisa Richards, would you like to come up to the podium and?
Good. Hi, this is Lisa Richard, and I have a couple of comments about the procurement policy that is under consideration. I read this, and I'm just really happy that you are adopting a procurement policy into code. And this one looks excellent. It really covers a lot of bases, seems to be very well-written, very professional. And I just think it's wonderful. But I do have a couple of specific comments on definitions. I could not help myself from making a couple of suggestions. I did refrain in some other areas, but, oh my, it's, it's good. It's just really well-written overall. On page two of seventeen, under contract, the definition of contract, I don't think there's any reason for you to have a definition in your procurement code. So it specifically applies to procurement that says that contracts are generally in writing. They're always going to be in writing for your purposes, procuring goods and services for the city. And I would just delete, and generally. Secondly, the top definition, city employee, I found that very odd. It, it basically has three categories. An individual drawing a salary or wages, fine. A non-compensated individual serving as an elected official, fine.
Where are you?
On page two, under section two definitions.
Okay.
At the, at the top, city employee.
Okay.
And so we're, we're making a definition for, specifically for this procurement code. And I'm not sure why it's necessary to include non-compensated individuals, essentially volunteers, performing personal services for the city. And then it becomes very general after that. Or for any department activity, not sure what that is, commission, council, board, or any other entity established by the manager and, or by you all. And it, it seems a potential risk to define a city employee as essentially people who volunteer for the city. Especially in this, with this sort of generalized language that's in here and many different categories given, it's a little bit confusing. And I would just take it out. You're not going to be giving any volunteers authority to procure goods and services under, you know, under your manager or, or any managerial. Is there some need for this that I'm not aware of? If there isn't a specific need, if, if it wasn't very intentionally put in for a very good reason, then I would suggest deleting it, because it is a potential risk to the city, and I'm a citizen. You don't want to authorize volunteers to act on behalf of the city under your procurement code. You could define volunteer separately if you need to use the term volunteer in this code. And then do so specifically and with intent. The only place that I ever saw in here, a reference to volunteers had to do with, well, actually, it wasn't even a reference to volunteers, but in your section where you prohibit employees of the city from being involved in the, the sale of city property. You have some limitations on that. No employee of the city or their relatives may, you know, purchase city property unless it's done, unless that property is being sold to the public under a public process. There's a section about that, and that was the only place that I could see any possible use for this language that you have in your definition, where if you might want to say, a volunteer for the city cannot purchase city property unless, if you wanted to include volunteers along with city employees as being prohibited from purchasing city property in some instances. That was the only, so my suggestion is take it out. And it's better just to streamline things and not have extra things that are really not needed in there. So it, do I have another minute? Am I done?
Go ahead.
Under your, page five, you, and this is just, just a suggestion. It's, you have section three point four, which breaks out a five hundred dollar category. So you might want to consider whether you want to be that fine about your categories, will that add inefficiencies? You might want to consider, you know, sticking with the, up to a fifteen hundred category, and then a fifteen hundred to twenty-five thousand category, and just eliminate that one. You may have some movement right around those numbers. And so you'll go from, oh, well, we went over the thousand dollar limit, now we have to get another quote. You know, it could introduce complications and inefficiencies. And so just saying you might want to do that. And my final comment is that, as beautiful as this is, it doesn't really address ethical issues that might involve city employees or their families in regard to the, to the procurement code. So that would be something to consider at a later time. You could have a completely separate section of code. You already have an ethics section, you could add something to it having to do with procurement and limitations that you place on employees for their involvement in, you know, contracts or their close family members doing contracts with city. That's just one area. So anyway, congratulations for what looks like a really excellent procurement code, except for the two definitions. I really feel strongly you should delete the, the language that I referred to. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
In response to the definitions, I mean, that section, specifically the city employee, I would just ask that it needs to cover city employees, housing authority, any entities that we reimburse money to. I have, will, will be asking them to follow the same procurement policy, for example, like the library. So I, I just want to make sure our bases are covered in that aspect.
Well, with housing authority and the library, they're not, you know, we appoint board members, but we have no control over their actions, so they should have their own procurement policy.
But we, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we, I mean, we budget, for example, building maintenance for the library. This, this is to ensure that, that we have control over how the funds that we're providing are spent.
Yeah, I think that we do the maintenance on the building. We provide a budget, but the budget for maintenance doesn't go to them. I thought we changed that a few years back.
We reimburse their expenses.
Yeah, I mean, the example that came up to us is that, you know, we have provided some funds for the library to redo a section of the library and up to sixty thousand dollars. We're not just writing them a check for sixty thousand dollars, but they have to run that project through the city. And so that's what we talked about, this would come into play, how they. And so that's what we talked about, this would come into play, how they spend that money.
Well, if it's on remodeling of a city-owned building, then the city should be in charge of modifying.
That's why I just said we're in charge.
That's what we want. I, I just want the language to be clear on that and not misunderstand that because the library is carrying out the activities and we are reimbursing them for it.
But any construction going on in the city-owned building, the contract for the construction and that work should come to the city, not the person using the building. It's our building. We shouldn't be paying them to modify our building. We should have the rule over the modification, just like when we did the ADA modifications to the library. That was our contract done in their building. And the $60,000 that we authorized for them to do their remodeling, it's our building. The contract should have gone through the city. And that money then was a maximum. If they're, we're allowing them to negotiate with an architect, you know, we shouldn't transfer our ownership or our management of that money to some other entity that's using our building. Understand what I'm trying to say?
Yes, I do. I think we're.
That's a separate issue from this.
Yeah.
Well, no, that's what it ties back here because she's saying she wants this to go to the housing authority and the library that they use the same procurement policy. But we have no control over their actual funds, so.
She just said she is going to ask them to follow this.
Yes.
There's no harm in asking. You're right, we can't make it.
But that's what the part here, dealing with the volunteers and the definition, was encompassing their workers, is what I understood Lacey is saying.
I don't know if that's true.
Well, it wouldn't be volunteers. I mean, we, this would be, you know, a board or any other entity established.
I, I understood Lisa's comments. The, the word volunteer doesn't appear in there. I think that's people you appoint to boards. Planning commission, all these, you know, the tree board. I don't know what budgetary, budgetary authority they have to buy anything, but if they did, this, this would pick them up. And I think, I asked Craig, I think this was put together by city staff and this was modeled after an area city that has this. And that language is taken from that. So I understand her concern, but I think it's aimed at people serving on boards.
Yeah. If the boards have no authority to spend money, which they don't right now, then they shouldn't be considered in a definition of allowing them to have that. Because we don't want the park board spending money or the planning and zoning board spending money.
As many boards as the city has, and I can't sit here and tell you that they don't get involved in the decision-making process on contracts from time to time. I honestly can't sit here and say one way or another. But this would guard against, this would make sure that if they did, they're subject to this policy. So I don't know what harm it does.
But they would, they would make a recommendation, but it would be like the director of the library.
I'm not talking about the library.
But I mean.
Housing authority. I'm talking about the city boards, the zoo board or something. Yeah, I mean, the park board. Yeah, thank you. Doesn't the park board make, you know, I, I don't know. I'm just saying that's, this isn't aimed at the library or the housing authority.
Okay. Well, that's what it started.
Well, she's saying she'd like the overall policy.
Just an example.
To apply to.
I'm saying I don't think we want to open the door for the boards to have the authority to spend money. It needs to go back to that.
I don't think this does. This actually guard, protects you from it, should it occur. I, yeah, you're right, the city commission would have to authorize that specifically. Otherwise, it would be ill. Chairman of the planning commission is going to order out pizza for the planning commission in charge to the city.
Wouldn't dare.
Get three quotes for that. Sorry. It's getting late, so.
And I got the one about the contract about, and generally, about admitting that part.
The key phrase there is the first, it says, "a legally binding promise enforceable by law." You could really stop there because, you know, it's not a, and that implies that when you say enforceable by law, that means the judge is looking at it and saying, "That's a contract." So I mean, that by definition, it doesn't matter what we put in there, it's, when it goes to court, it's what the judge says, so. And the, the part that's, where it says, "and generally in writing," that's just saying in general, contracts are in writing. I think most of the city stuff is in writing, but if you're talking about minor lawnmower repairs at Tommy's on South, whatever street that is, I can't guarantee you there's a written contract every time the city employee takes a lawnmower in for repair. It is a contract, but I don't know if it's in writing. You could put a period after the word "law" and be perfectly fine.
And just eliminate.
All the rest of it.
All the rest of it. "It's above by law."
Or you could leave it in. I, I mean, I, it's not going to have a big impact either way. People understand what contract is.
Okay, so this is going to read, "a legally binding promise enforceable by law."
Yeah, you know, if you're asked on a law school test question to define a contract, that'd be a decent answer. There's certain elements of the contract, but, you know, you get into a lot of detail. When you say enforceable by law, that implies that the elements of the contract have been bad, so.
Okay, so we're just basically cleaning up some language. That statement would be.
It's not bad the way it is, but if you want to mess with it, that's where I'd put the period.
Right there.
That's up to you.
And there was another.
Yes, moving on to this, this chart, the different purchase amounts. I, I mean, I would completely agree that I think having the $500 section is, is not necessarily necessary and could, could create additional, you know, maybe an inefficiency. I would be happy to have the first category as one to 1,500 and then continue on the 1,500 to 15,000 and so forth.
Okay, hold on here just a minute. I can't write that fast.
It's here on the screen. It does seem like there's a, an extra layer more than we need perhaps.
I, I got the, the updated one. So you're looking at, okay, run that by again, Lacey.
It would be combining the first two rows, so, into the first one, so it'd be from $1 to $1,500.
Okay.
And then the next category would be 1,501 to 15,000.
Four categories altogether then?
Yes.
I think this is great. It's something I, I think the city should have had for many, many, many years. I just assumed we had something like this when I got on city commission and found that we didn't. And I, I have a feeling once we get into it, we'll want to tweak it, you know, because some, some places I can see, or you're like, they make me think, gosh, that would be so cumbersome. But I, I feel like it's a great starting point, even if we do need to tweak it some.
I tried to go through it. I got tied up in it and didn't get a look at it clearly till today, and I feel I rushed through it. I'd really like to go back through it again and look at it before we get a recommendation. And hearing the input in your presentation, I, I'd like to go back through some of the notes I made and.
Talk about it again.
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds good.
It is a good, good start. I've looked at what the county uses and saw some there. Theirs was four pages. I like the additions that we've added. I think we're covering a lot more, more ground and it makes it clear. I, I understand what, what you're talking about, Lisa, with covering some of the conditions of hiring family members, department head, hiring a family member, or distribution of property too, within the circuit, that there's some ethics things there that, you know, we've really covered a lot of ground in, in this draft. And I think it's going to be a good working tool, but, you know, I, I personally think I'd need to go back and revise some of my notes and look at it again.
Okay. Yeah, that, that's fine with me. We've been without a procurement policy forever, so I guess another, till the next meeting is not going to.
Gary's going to be gone in May.
Oh, that's right.
I'll be on the phone now.
Yeah. You want to wait till June when you can sit down and.
I'm, I'm ready to go tonight or whenever you guys want to.
You want to bring this back for the next meeting in two weeks?
Yeah, we could.
Let's bring it back in two weeks for the next meeting.
Okay.
And we will, we'll go forward with that.
Great.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Great stuff.
Yes, thank you, Lacey. G. Consider a proposal from Jared Gilmore and Phillips PA to prepare the 2018-2020 audits. Lacey.
This is the contract for audit services. We would like to do a three-year contract with the firm that, that did the audit last year. I think everyone was, was happy with the audit. It's, it's recommended to have that continuity of the same auditor. We really could have pushed for a longer contract with them, but I think three years is a, a good start, so we'd have a total of four years. And they have brought the contract to me for, for signature.
With the, the three-year contract, some of the, the contracts like this, I've seen, you'll interview a consultant for a three-year period, but then each year it's renewed so that if there's a problem that comes along, you can not renew it for the following year. Is that set up? I didn't notice that in here. Instead of establishing a definite three-year contract, it's, okay, we're going to give you, or we're considering three years, but each year we'll send you a letter initiating and renewing to extend the contract. So if they fail to perform, or there's conditions that come up that we decide we don't want to renew for the next year, we can stop at that point. But then we're looking at every three years then, or what that predetermined that we would open it up for consideration of other firms. Now, we can always go back to them at the end of three years if we desire, but I see your, your consistency. That guarantees you locking in the continuity from year to year in that period of time. But, and the state does that with some on-call contracts. All theirs are for a three-year period, but each year you get a letter just confirming you want to continue the work.
Jeff, is there a standard kind of exit clause that we could ask them to include?
Yeah, you can always ask for anything you want.
Something that you could recommend that I send to them?
Because sometimes you get slapped.
We had in the last one, we had a three-year agreement, if you recall, with Yurkis and Michelle, and there was an out for both of us. And they, I, I was just looking here, I thought we had that kind of a language that either party, because as you know, Yurkis and Michelle, only one year, and they dropped out of that three-year thing, so.
I didn't see it in.
Yeah, I, I was looking for something like that. It's about disputes by mediator, but.
Right.
Yeah. There was something else too that, it talked about, the, the document, audit documentation for this agreement is a property of Jared Gilmore and Phillips PA and constitutes confidential information. Is the audit documentation the actual audit results? Or is that some notes and working data behind the scene that would be proprietary?
I think this is referring to their proprietary information. Their working papers.
There was another part that talked about, they had to be notified for the release of, of the report. And I didn't know how that related to Cora.
Which section?
It's on page four. Moreover, as a time of this engagement, we haven't been notified in writing or otherwise that the professional accounting services rendered under this agreement will be made available to any other person, firm, or corporation for any purpose not specified herein. Consequently, no other person, firm, or corporation is entitled to rely upon these professional services for any purpose without our express written agreement. That's not the final audit. I, I had trouble identifying. Do we have to post the audit? And it's.
I don't have a problem, but I think what you just read is them saying the audit is for the city and not for some third party to rely on.
Okay.
It's for you to rely on.
I believe so.
If I heard you correctly. I just didn't print, I printed everything else but, I did not bring a copy.
But that's not dealing with the actual audit restricting distribution of it?
No.
They can't, they can't restrict the distribution then.
Yeah, it's a public document, like you're saying.
There's certain third-party questions.
Yeah, that's what, I knew, I didn't know if that was in conflict to the public document.
Okay, so as it stands now, then we're basically looking at some language in this contract where there would be an out for either party. That's, that's where we're at. We're looking for something that would identify that. And if we can, we can get that established and in writing, then we'd be more than willing to, to.
I would, I didn't really review it for this meeting because I didn't know it would be an issue, but Craig said there was dispute resolution and involved mediation, which is okay. But if there's anything in there about binding arbitration, I'd probably recommend you delete it. And I have, I've not read it, so maybe that's not in there.
Third-party mediation.
Mediation's okay, because that's voluntary. You don't want to get, you never want to get up and bound up in binding arbitration because it's a zoo. I'd rather take your chances in court, you know? Not that it would ever come to that.
One other question. It talked about the audits of federal expenditures exceeding 70, 7,000.
750,000.
750,000 dollars.
Yes.
Is that like our loans or our CDBGs?
Yes, so we would require, we would require the single, the audit that it's referring to.
It requires a federal audit, which is your single audit.
Okay.
Some of those have to do with like the airport grants we get.
Right.
Yes.
So that's not in, when we're looking at the, like, example for the 2018 audit, the 18,900 is just for the general audit. Then for each grant, we have another 1,900.
No, it's one, only one.
Just a year audit.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
That's only if your total federal, federal expenditures for that year are above 750,000. That requirement comes in.
Okay.
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 So it said maybe subject to a single audit. If it is subject, then that's what the rule would be.
Well, that's what I, I was. Well, that's what I, I was confused with a single audit for each one we get, or a single audit for all of them.
Per year.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
All right, so...
We'll come back with that language and...
Okay.
Can we, can we have a motion to accept this and authorize city manager to sign with the additional out language? Just because they are scheduled to come...
That's right, they're, uh, May...
May, May seventh and eighth is the date that they gave me.
Yeah.
Would be my suggestion.
And if you got the...
Subject to city attorney review or something like that.
Yeah, and then if you email them to us, we can give approval tonight, but then if we find out that we see a major problem, we can always call a real quick special meeting, but that'll...
Sure.
Set, uh...
Okay. Sounds good if you make it.
Okay, so, the motion is, um...
To approve the contract with...
With the additional out language.
Out language by either party.
Authorize city manager to sign, subject to sending a copy prior to signature to city commissioners.
Well, meters, I can wing it.
Yeah, go ahead.
I move to approve the proposal from Jared Gilmore and Phillips, P.A., to prepare the City of Independence 2018, 19, and 2020 audits, uh, with addition to clause concerning termination of agreement, and to authorize the city manager, Craig Whitehead, to sign the contract. And the revised contracts will be emailed to the commissioners for review as soon as modifications are completed. Period.
Yep, so I did.
All right, Lacy, thank you.
Thank you.
With that motion, I'm gonna second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, thank you, Leonard. Okay, we have come down to, um, okay, here it is. All righty, um, you've all got the preliminary list and maps of city-owned properties, and we've had a chance to look at the city board minutes, so, moving on, we're going to city managers' comments.
Just real briefly, I wanna give you this information. Uh, beautification, just wanted to give you an update on where we are. Uh, the top slide there, as you see, it's, uh, to date since it started, we've issued 346 violation notices. Now, remember, under this sixty-day amnesty kind of thing, these, we've sent these notices, they have that sixty days to, um, correct the deficiency, whatever that is, uh, but then come June first, we'll cir- circle back and see if they've actually done that. Uh, but, so that 346 encompasses all those 268 environmental, forty-three abandoned cars, and yeah, sixty-nine grass violations already, so.
Wow, that's early.
A little rain, it starts, starts growing. And then just below, just to say, give you an update on the cost, uh, and the dumpster program that we put out there, uh, so far, a hundred and eighty, almost a hundred and eighty-seven tons of trash has been disposed of, uh, at a cost to the landfill sixty-nine hundred bucks. Pull charges, I, you know, getting that together, some total cost to date, uh, were just over eleven thousand dollars. So, it's just a brief update on where we are, and certainly taking in a lot of trash.
Great, great. All right, um, nation of comments?
I would like to mention Love Independence Day this weekend. We have, uh, I'm on the pride committee that has organized that for, I think this is the fourth year, and we've got just phenomenal, um, number of projects going on this year. I think the last list I saw, it's sixty or seventy projects going on this weekend, so I think that's very exciting. Something else I, I never really heard of, any discussion about, was the water outage that happened on Tuesday. When I was in the shower, my water suddenly stopped, and I was out for like two hours.
You're the commissioner, I didn't, I didn't know that.
Yeah, I, I never heard exactly what happened.
Did you hear anything? I know they were...
Hey, I sent you a message track on that, did you not get it?
Can you explain to me a little more?
Something down by the railroad track, there was, there was an outage down by the railroad track.
How many homes were out of water?
I'm not sure how that...
That I don't, I do not know.
And then they came back on, it was...
They blew a, as I recall, there was a six-inch, six-inch line.
Says a forty-five degree fitting blew apart on a six-inch main.
So, I had no water for about two hours, and when I did get water, it was muddy. I mean, it was very dirty.
Yeah, that's typical, you have to run it, let it run for a while.
Yeah, but when you're in the shower, covered with soap, waiting, waiting, and waiting, you'll take whatever you can get. So, we don't know how many homes were without water that morning?
See, that's, that's why you need your waters.
Was that on the new water line?
Emergency water store.
Now, Tenth Street.
They didn't tell me where it was. Exactly.
You said it down by the railroad tracks, I'm not sure how that, that's all, I don't know.
I never saw anything.
In relation to your house.
Yeah, I don't know.
Tenth Street.
I guess that Tenth Street, must be, uh, those railroad tracks down there. Now I get it, now I get it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all I had.
All right, Leonard?
On, uh, let me see if I can decipher my, uh, the brewer, he was gonna redo a drawing and get it to us, has that changed, or we still waiting for...
Uh, I don't think they're gonna come back with anything. Last I heard, they're just, the sidewalk's gonna stay as it is and...
Okay. Yeah, um, I, I looked back through the downtown transitional plan and dealing with, with the ramps, uh, that we had, we had talked about, and in the, the survey, they didn't identify any of the buildings, and that one statement, uh, in that sentence, um, the way I took it when we read it, when you, the letter was about cross slopes, and the cross slope was a slope perpendicular to the direction of travel, and when it said that we would provide ramps accessing to the building, I read it when we authorized or looked at the letter initially, uh, that that would be if we modified a sidewalk to correct the cross slope, and then at the building, the, there was now a step going into the building, that that's when we would provide the ramp, but any non-compliant entrance now would be the owner's responsibility. One of the things, you look at the number of them downtown on remodelings, one of the stores in the three hundred block on North Penn, they actually put their ramp inside the building. So, when you look at some of the numbers, uh, of ramps that could create, maybe instead of an individual ramp outside, we might have to start looking at requiring building owners to put them, put them inside. Uh, on, uh, I sent a, an email, I had a, a call, somebody had their water turned on, and when the meter was set, they turned the valve on too, and they didn't monitor the flow indicator, and they were gone a couple hours, and a valve was opened on a washing machine that had been removed, and it flooded the house, and, uh, my daughter and son-in-law experienced the same thing a year ago, had some ceiling damage. Theirs was a broken water line, and I've noticed all the other utility companies require somebody to be home at the time the service is turned on, and I thought maybe we might wanna consider that, even if, if it's a telephone company or cable, somebody has to be present and, uh...
Yeah, we, we, we are gonna take a look at that. I think, I think we'll do something like that moving forward, because you're right. Uh, and I think, I think, uh, if I'm not mistaken, I think Lacy's, Lacy's left, but, um, you know, we try to be there if we can, but given, given our staff, but I think, uh, or we, they try to make contact, make sure somebody's there, um, but I, I, I think you're right, I think it's a good suggestion to try to see if we can, I know I have to be home in the cable company, I, you know, so, but it's just a matter of making sure that everything works.
Yeah, and even with the indicator, you can tell if it's flowing, but I think that's really, we don't wanna take the responsibility of monitoring that to determine if we consider the flow as just not filled up yet, and it'll stop, that really what the, the tenant or the homeowner there, when our crew sets a meter or turns a valve on, that it'd be good to look at some kind of pre-arranged policy that they are there. I finally just, I finally determined what my one note meant. When we were discussing some ADA issues, uh, downtown with sidewalks, a saw cut for a water line coming across a sidewalk, it was mentioned that, uh, that instructions were given that the whole block would be required to, uh, come under compliance with ADA, cross slope and everything, and I had found, uh, some publications that discussed the difference between maintenance and alteration and spot repairs, eliminating trip hazards or spalling or replacement of a section. A concrete doesn't necessitate, uh, or doesn't qualify as an alteration, but it also was clear that you can't use the maintenance to replace a whole block of sidewalk and not make it com- compliance, and it lists some things about the street too, the diamond grinding, chip and seal, a fog seal, all those are under maintenance and not requiring alterations, so, you know, if we grind a, a street or provide a chip and seal on it, we don't have to do ADA modifications on it, but that was all I had.
Mill and overlay?
No.
Mill and overlay?
No, just, uh, they called it, uh, diamond grinding, so if you go in and lay, mill and overlay is an alteration.
You're changing the grade of the street. When you do a mill and overlay, you can change the grade.
Yeah.
But just sealing it with chip and seal, you're not.
Okay.
They did, yeah.
I just have one, um, comment that I need to make that was passed on to me about, uh, water leaks in the Cherry Street area and Long Park Boulevard. I think they've, uh, they've maybe been patched, but I think we probably have other leaks that are showing up. So, hopefully, um, when we get into the water line replacement, maybe these particular areas that have been, where we've been out and patched numerous times, that, that we'll identify and, and go through and do a, uh, replace a pretty good section of line to see if we can eliminate.
I mean, there's leaks now, there's, have these been reported?
I think there's one on Cherry Street, someone sent me a picture.
Cherry Street and...
Uh, be Cherry Street and...
Where we've seen these...
Fifth or fourth, fourth or fifth.
Fourth or fifth, yeah.
And, um, and where are we at on that? I know we've, we've allocated three hundred thousand dollars toward water line replacements, so where's the, what's the status of that as far as...
I know Terry's got projects lined up, he's not, he's out, um, right now, but I can get a report back to him, well, 'cause he's got some...
Something identified and ready to...
He's identified.
Okay, okay, that would be great. Okay, that's, that's my last comment. After that favorite part of the meeting, adjournment, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you for sitting in for...